Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today on the January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at nine thirty. And we'll start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. So prior to the first, or the discussion on the first item of the agenda as per procedural bylaw, section nine point eight. We will go around the room for each councillor to select the items they wish to debate. Items that must be discussed are two point one, four point one, four point two, four point three, six point one, seven point two, seven point three, eight point two, and all of item twelve. I believe we have an addition, twelve point eight, that administration would like to add. And that would be under FOIP advice from officials. And if we have any additions or deletions before we move on.
Thank you. Good morning. I'd like to talk about seven point. Oh, so you, I think you called that one seven point three, seven point four, seven point eight, and delete five point one.
And delete five point one, okay. All righty, Councilor Capitan. You're good, Councilman. You're good?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Councilor Wall.
Eight point one eight, please.
Eight point one eight. Oops. Okay. Councilor Hall.
I propose to delete seven point three and split the, delete seven point three and split the question.
Delete seven point three and split the question. Is it with regards to the deletions you'd like to split the question or?
With, yeah.
Okay. Um, so I will just double check and see if I've missed, missed any at all for myself. Um. No, I believe that is it. So, um, on approval.
Oh, Madam, Madam Chair, just so. You didn't ask admin yet, but I just wanted to jump in. We asked council if we could add twelve eight advice from officials enclosed.
Yes, and I did mention it.
Oh, sorry.
No worries, no worries. Yeah, so that's definitely, I've written it down. So on the additions and deletions portion of the agenda, if we can please, if that's correct.
Okay, could you please go through the?
List again, please, sure. Two point one, four point one, four point two, four point three, six point one, seven point two, seven point four, seven point eight, eight point one A, eight point three, or pardon me, eight point one A, eight point two, um, and all of items twelve. We had an addition of twelve point eight advice from officials. We had a request to delete five point one and seven point three. To split the question on the additions and deletions. Okay, all those in favor of the additions and deletion?
I'm sorry, no, individually, please.
Individually, all right. If we can have a motion then, that council would like to, we'll start with five point one, delete five point one, all those in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Was that, I'm sorry, Councilor Anderson was in favor? Yep, and all those opposed, two. So that would be seven and two. Six, six and two, sorry, thank you very much, yes, we're missing, and I forgot to mention, I'm sorry, folks, that Councilor Gerlock sends his regrets, I apologize. Okay, and on the deletion of seven point three, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, five, all those opposed, one, two, three. All right, so that is carried. And on the addition of twelve point eight advice from officials, all those in favor? And I see no opposed, so that's eight and zero. If I could have a motion. Thank you very much, Councilman Minz would like to approve the agenda as amended, all those in favor. I believe in any opposed. Eight and O, thank you. Our first delegation is not here until shortly after ten, we'll be running a little bit late. So with the deletion of five point one, we will move to six point one, which is on page thirty nine of your agenda. This is the road closure bylaw, zero zero three, two thousand and twenty five. Uh, the recommendation is to give first reading of bylaw zero zero three, two thousand and twenty five road closure within lot one, block one, plan one, one, two, three, one, seven, four, and lot two, block one, plan one, one, two, three, one, seven, four, to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on February twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five, at nine thirty AM for bylaw zero zero three, two thousand and twenty five. Is there a motion for first reading? Councilor Cromwell, thank you. All those in favor? And any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes eight and O. Um, the, I will split the question there to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on February twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five, at nine thirty AM. All those in favor?
Oh, can I?
Sure.
But I just got one, one, uh, question asked here on page, what is it, uh, one, or page forty five on the diagram. The top in the yellow markings there might not like, is there, is it gonna actually follow the road plan there? Instead of going right to the top of the quarter? You see the yellow markings there, where, where at the bottom it follows the road plan, but the top of the, on the yellow, it doesn't. So just want to make sure that that'll follow the road plan, or else we cut everything off.
Yeah. Um, Madam Chair, members of council, if you go to the page just before page forty four, um, that is the actual survey plan of the proposed road closure, and you could see where your correct, uh, councilman's where it, it won't. There will be an area where you will be able to drive within the road planned, it won't close it all the way to the north.
Perfect. Right on, thank you. The only other thing is the actual road plan around there, is it at a hundred foot right away? The, the, uh, the one that goes on the east side of, of those lots? Or down through the middle, I guess? Is that a hundred foot right away running through there, or?
Um, Madam Chair, members of council, uh, I don't have that answer, but just looking at the aerial image, it looks like it follows the range roads, and typically, our roads are a thirty meter ride. Thirty meter wide right away.
Okay, if, if we could just make sure on that, because if we're gonna let that road allowance go back to the landowners, we want to make sure that we actually get a hundred foot right away around on that, on that road planning. That's the only thing I'm looking at, is just to make sure we have a hundred foot right away through there. Does go down to the Bison Ridge subdivision, so if it ever does get to be rebuilt or something like that, we can. We got the right away then, eh? Perfect, thank you.
Awesome. All right, so on the motion to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on February twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five, at nine thirty AM for bylaw zero zero three, two thousand and twenty five, all those in favor? Any opposed? Eight and O, thank you. All right, we move into, uh, section seven, item number seven point two. I'm going to turn the seat over to Deputy Reed Minz, as I will declare, uh, conflict, as I have a family member that is participating in this event.
Okay, I will remember this one, oh, seven point two fifty eight. Uh, so on item seven point two, um, do I have a motion for the recommendation?
That's what amended.
Okay, motion to, uh, Councilor Chamsick recommends that moves a motion that council supported in Park Compostit High School international trip of five hundred dollars financial contribution. Um, any discussion, Councilor Anderson?
Um, well, I understand that the policy is for five hundred or at council's discretion. I think that due to the price of this trip and the incredible opportunity it is for the youth in our community, I think that we should consider giving them more for that. Um, especially since it's spread across so many kids, it's not, you know, just one or two. So I would propose an amendment to amend the value to twenty five hundred dollars.
Twenty five, so, so the amendment on the, on the motion would be to, to take it to twenty five hundred dollars. No, we only have a budget. I think, what's our budget for that eighteen hundred?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the, the budget is eighteen hundred of that whole entire program.
Of the whole entire program, so that, that sucks up the whole entire program, so, and more, so I guess, uh, okay, I guess, uh, so discussion on the amendment?
I would propose that that be further amended to say, to, and to direct uh, two thousand dollars to come out of reserves. We've got underspent by fifteen hundred bucks in the prior two years, and so there's this, like, on a more global scale. Um, we've not overspent in this budget line, and we've got, um, although we don't accrue a balance, we, in the last two years, have carried on with fifteen hundred bucks, so I would amend that to include the language and direct administration to take two thousand dollars from reserves. And then that leaves a budget. A big piece of the budget intact for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that. Um, thank you. So that's the second amendment. First one is, uh, yeah, so we have to go through the, but I see Councilor Cromwell's hand was up.
Thank you. No, I would like to, uh, commend my friends across the table. I was looking at that, and I didn't have fifteen hundred, I had, I think, about eleven hundred from last year that was unused and went into reserve, so I think that is a, a great contribution. We have kids from all over the county and the town traveling to what could very well be a once-in-a-lifetime trip. So I'm, I'm very happy to see that, uh, level of support. We get a lot of hockey teams or, or things of that nature. We don't get a lot of trips like this, and I think it really highlights what we're trying to do and how we're trying to help out our community as a whole. And I definitely support those two amendments.
Okay, any other discussion? Um, okay. So we'll go with the first amendment, uh, on, on the motion would be to
direct admin to take the balance, uh, sorry, to direct admin to take two thousand dollars from reserves.
Okay. So on that amendment, um, all in favor? That's, uh, seven and O, so that's carried. Second amendment, uh, was for the twenty five hundred, do we need to, to, yeah. Okay, so on the second amendment, how was it worded?
To amend the contribution to twenty five hundred dollars.
To amend the, okay, so to amend the contribution to twenty five hundred dollars. All in favor? Seven and O, and then on the main motion, which who, who put the main motion through?
Reads this now. The council supports Compostit High School's international trip with a twenty five hundred dollar financial contribution with two thousand dollars coming from reserves.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much for that. So on that, on that motion, uh, all in favor? Seven and zero, carried. Thank you very much for that, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's a very good and amazing motion. So we will get Reeve Holland back in. And moving on to seven point four, when Reeve Holland comes back in.
Seven point three, I guess, seven point three.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Thank you. Um, next item up on our agenda, just look at the time, next item up on our agenda is, uh, seven point four, which is page sixty four of your package. And it's with regards to the TransCanada Trail Spring two thousand and twenty five Trail Care Grant. Councilor Hall.
I'd make a motion that, um, administration be directed to sign off on an application prepared by the ALT group.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, I would move that, uh, administration be directed to sign off on the Spring Trail Care Grant when the application is prepared by the Trans Landing Trails Steering Committee or the Landing Trail Group.
Okay.
I think the group can prepare it and bring it into us.
Okay. Um, I, I guess I have a question with, for administration, for, uh, Athabasca Landing Trails Steering Committee to, uh, complete the application, do they then forward the application through to Athabasca County? For it to be submitted, and, and the reason why I'm asking is because you have to be an owner or an operator of the trail to fill in this application, which the Athabasca County is, um, and we have an operator uh, as well, which is Athabasca Recreational Trails Association. So Athabasca Landing Trails Steering Committee, I don't believe, can be the ones who are the owner of the grant. If you would like the application to be completed by the group, but they can't be the owner.
No, that's, that's, in the past, we've heard that the county had to do it because we were the owner of the trail, now if the operator can fill it in, then maybe the operator should be the one filling it in. But councils assisted, you know, multiple times in the past, and we don't offer this service to other groups. And I think, um, if it's required that county, the county sign off on it, then create the least amount of work possible and bring the grant application in complete for sign off. But I don't think we're in the business of filling in grant applications for third parties to get money, and if we are, um, it's, it's a precedent that I think we'd want to have a discussion around, because I can think of a number of other groups that are worthy of some grant support, and if we're gonna get into that business, we will see more applications for the county to fill out grants on their behalf. So I, I think if, if I can amend my own wording, then to say to have the operator fill in the grant application.
Okay, um, I guess the explanation that, that, um, I would like to provide is that the Athabasca County owns the trail. Um, this would be a grant that directly impacts Athabasca County infrastructure. Um, it's pretty minimal, um, as a matter of fact, most of the information that was provided on all previous grants was submitted, it's two page, um, two pages of questions, it took about ten minutes to complete. Um, so I think if I understand correctly, if the grant is completed by another individual, uh, the operator, um, as, uh, Councilor Hall's requested, bringing it in for sign off means at the be, uh, the application would then be submitted still by Athabasca County, is that accurate?
Um, you've provided new information that the operator can sign, uh, fill it in. So it would be fine for me to have the motion worded to direct the op, um, the operator to fill it in and, and to offer our support or a letter of support. I just don't think the county needs to be doing this work for a third party.
Okay, Councilor Cromwell?
Thank you, I I do disagree as we're not a third party, we are owner of that trail. And we have a grant writer that was brought in for exactly this type of situation to progress grams, to get them done, to work with our partners. We had that conversation in this room that our grant writer would work with the groups that we work with. Uh, so I would like to amend that motion that admin be directed to, uh, I'm gonna work on my wording here, but to complete and submit that grant application.
As a point of order, I don't think you could have an amendment that changes the main spirit of the motion, need to defeat it and make a new one.
Um. I guess then if, go ahead, Councilman Minz, as I'm thinking about this.
Question to administration is does our grant writer have time to, to help with this two-page document, or, or is that gonna throw all the grant writing process into complete turmoil?
Oh, Madam Chair, likely not. I mean, we could probably figure out how to submit the application.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Councilor Wall.
Like I've asked every time before, when Athabasca Landing Trail gets a letter from the Reeve, um, to submit, or they get it submitted by the Reeve, um, every other community group has to follow the grants to groups, we're gonna, um, application form. Question is, where's the funding coming from for this, um, for our administration time? And why is that group not submitting it on behalf of themselves? Why is the Reeve submitting every time when they ask?
Um, it's not the Reeve, it's a committee member of Athabasca Landing Trails Steering Committee. And at our meetings, uh, the last meeting we had, we were encouraged for operators and owners of the trail, which are the municipalities, to, uh, complete the grant and submit it. Um, it's been a wonderful grant in the community. Um, and it's been very beneficial for volunteerism, uh, garnering volunteerism, cleanup in our communities, community pride, the trail maintenance, et cetera, and it's been, uh, done with very minimal, this is a twelve hundred and fifty dollar grant. Uh, it's, it's minimal, uh, but it makes a huge impact. So with regards to the funding, the funding comes from this grant from TransCanada Trail. Um, well, when we have a grant writer, uh, when we submit grants, I would assume that that would come out of the grant writer's, uh, budget, uh, and administrative budget. Um, and that's exactly what the purpose of the grant writer is, um, in my opinion. Um, when we have grants that benefit our municipality, um, that's what they were hired to do, um, but I could be wrong.
Can I follow it?
Sure.
So our grants to group has an in-kind donation request. I'm wondering why the group did not submit that.
Um, as a matter of fact, I don't know, I didn't ask them to submit that, we're discussing the TransCanada Trail. If you have a question for that, you could definitely forward that question to the group.
So that's my point, is that this is on here because a member of council sits on that committee and is directing it.
Two members.
Sorry, two members, and I don't think that's appropriate to be pushing it through council. It should be following the same process as every other group in the county. The county owns a lot of stuff, and a lot of operators run county stuff. So I don't know why this is different than any other group.
Councilor.
I do believe in the past that the county has also helped us in the library grounds, so on, so forth as well. Um, just as a point of, uh, information.
Yes, thank you. Um, where I'm, I'm confused, I guess, as we've had several of these grants, um, passed through, and I, I guess I'm confused as to, um, why this is a concern, um, but I will. Pardon?
I asked.
Yeah, and I, I, I still don't understand the concern being that this is county-owned infrastructure, and it benefits, uh, all kinds of, uh, residents, our community, uh, and residents who visit our community. So, um, I guess when we come, as you mentioned with the, um, amendment, um, maybe we should be looking at the original motion and putting in a secondary motion depending on if it fails or goes through. Um, unless there is an amendment, as, uh, Councilor Hall mentioned, uh, doesn't change the complete spirit of the original motion. Is there, uh, further words that you have that might follow in for an amendment, Councilor Cromwell?
Not that would be satisfactory to the original motion.
Okay. Do you have the original motion? I didn't write it down. Do you have it? Okay.
The, the original motion is basically to, um, direct the operator to, uh, complete the grant application and direct administration to provide county support, but county let supportive.
Let support, and you're asking for the operator to submit? Um, now that I'm looking at, I'm thinking about this, um, I believe the operator is applying for the TransCanada Trail Grant for the Peace River portion of the trail. Um, I don't know if the operator then could apply for a second grant for a different section, um, that would be something definitely.
If we had a, a request in writing from them, we would have a clear understanding of what's being asked.
A request from, I'm sorry? From, are you talking about from, I request from Athabasca Landing Trails Steering Committee?
Um, wherever this initiates could.
This is initiated through the Athabasca Landing Trails Steering Committee, and I believe I reported, uh, through the last meeting, uh, with regards to being requested that all municipalities and trail operators apply, are encouraged to apply for the grant. So it was, it did come through the committee as a request. Um, but on the, uh, I guess if there's no further discussion, we'll vote on the original motion. Um, to have the operator, to direct the operator to complete the TransCanada Trail Spring two thousand and twenty five Trail Care Grant and submit on behalf of Athabasca County. Is that accurate? To submit on Athabasca. Okay. On that.
Okay, I guess one question I have is so can there still be help given to the operator from the grant writer? Right? Yeah, but they fill out the application and sit down with the grant writer and make sure it's filled out right? Huh?
Councilor Wall, there are people live streaming that cannot hear, even though not have your microphone on.
Um, I guess the problem that the, uh, they would have to work with the, with the county, because it's the county's information that needs to be provided, such as county insurance, um, the locations, all of those things have to be provided by the, the, uh, Athabasca County. Of course, um, a prior grant that was completed could in, be forwarded to the operator to submit. Um, but again, um, we're spending more time talking about this than it would be to fill it. All righty, so I guess on the motion, um, I don't think we need to read it again, I think everyone understands, do they, what the motion is? All right, all those in favor? Two, three, four, all those opposed? One, two, three, four, that is defeated. Uh, secondary motion? that I would like to put forward is recommended to direct administration to apply for the TransCanada Trail Spring twenty twenty-five Trail Care Grant before the deadline of February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Does everybody have any conversation on that one? Go ahead.
I think it's very simple. It'll take minutes and we do a benefit for our community, our surrounding community, and even economic development. I can't see how we cannot move forward with it.
Okay. Um, as I'm thinking about this, I'd like to put my, an amendment in, or can I put an amendment in on my own motion? To, uh, direct the operator to apply for the TransCanada Trail Care and, uh, have Athabasca County submit. Is that fair? Okay. Pardon me? To, uh, direct the operator of the trail to apply for the TransCanada Trail Care twenty twenty-five Spring Trail Care Grant, pardon me, uh, before the deadline of February twenty twenty-eight, to forward for Athabasca County to submit.
Isn't that substantially the same as the motion that was just defeated?
I believe that it wasn't for the, uh, I believe it was for the operator to submit, or did I get that wrong? I'm sorry, I don't have it written down. Not for the, this is for the operator to fill it out, but turn it over to the county to submit. Was it not the prior one that was defeated was for the operator to submit? Can we double check on that, please? It was county support, but operator submission?
The previous motion that was voted upon was moved by Counselor Hall to direct the operator to complete the TransCanada Trail Spring twenty twenty-five Trail Care Grant and submit it on behalf of Athabasca County.
Right. Got it? Okay.
Seems substantially the same.
No, well, there, you're, we're asking Athabasca County to submit rather than the operator. Correct. Okay, so on the amendment, for the, or should we just make that a friendly amendment and go forward? Thank you very much. All right, so to direct the operator to apply for the TransCanada Trail Spring twenty twenty-five Trail Care Grant before the deadline of February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, and to have, uh, submit it to the Athabasca County to submit to TransCanada Trail. Is that everybody good with that? All right, all those in favor?
Question. I, I would still like to see a discussion on that. I, I see no reason why the county should be engaged in doing, um, grant writing work. There is an in-kind process that's not been followed this year or any other year, and so I still want to say I'm opposed to the, the, the county going down this path unless we're prepared to do it for other groups that we're connected to in the same way.
Um, and I guess there seems to be some confusion, uh, because this isn't on behalf of another group. It is behalf of Athabasca County for a trail that Athabasca County owns. So it's not on behalf of another group. It's be on behalf of the municipality that owns the infrastructure.
So just to clarify, will the county now be submitting grants for ARMS as well, since all their capital grants are technically maintaining county-owned infrastructure?
Guess you would have to bring that as a, a question to council. Because I believe the ARMS society isn't wholly owned by the municipality.
And I would like to remind my peers at the table that the county does also help with grants for the Water Commission and other entities as well. And how's, over the years, this is not out of the norm and we own the infrastructure.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, on that motion, all those in favor? Five, all those opposed. Three, five and three, that carries. Thank you.
And to make a follow-up motion?
Pardon me?
I'd like to make a follow-up motion.
Okay.
That admin be directed to send a letter to the Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society, offering our grant writing services to the society on behalf of the building's owner.
Did everybody get that? That Athabasca County?
That, that the administration be directed to send a letter to the Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society, offering our grant writing services to the society on behalf of the building's owners.
Hey, did everybody hear that? Go ahead, Counselor Captain.
This is kind of a surprise, but actually I think it's a really good idea, especially with the shortfall, um, being from one of the other partners. Clearly, uh, committing less funding to the ARMS Society to run the multiplex than was asked and expected. Um, having a professional grant writer might really actually help the county and the town right now. I just wanna be like, good thinking. I didn't think of that.
Thank you. There any other comments?
Madam Chair, um, as you're one employee and in charge of administrative resources, um, this is a different, I think this is a bigger discussion. If you want to start adding this to all groups, absolutely, we can bring it back as a discussion item. We'll tell you if there's, if we need more grant writers, we'll just add it to the budget, um. Just adding things, new tasks without an administrative report, might be problematic. And, um, uh, I would recommend you think about that before you pass the motion or vote on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to move this to our level of service in twenty twenty-five.
You would like to table it?
Table it, that would be correct.
Yes, table it to the level of service discussion, okay? That is then, uh, no discussion to take place with regards to that. So tabling this motion to the level of service discussion twenty twenty-five, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, that's six, and, or pardon me, seven opposed. One, seven and one. Thank you. I believe the next, where are we at? Um, do we know if our delegate is here for the ten AM? As of yet, not yet, okay? We will keep hammering through. I believe we move on to, uh, seven point eight, page sixty-nine of your package, pardon me. Did I miss one? Oh, but thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yep, yep, you're right. All right, so we're going to then move on to, uh, community event calendars, eight point one, page seventy-one. Go ahead, Counselor Chamsik.
Um, just wanna note that on February twelfth, uh, Grassland is having a volunteer appreciation night. Other than that, um, Grassland on the twenty-first is having their soup for seniors, open for the local Grassland, Crossfeeder areas. And on the twenty-fourth is our egg society, is the egg society meeting. And in March, uh, twenty-first is the Grassland Egg Fair. And on the twenty-fourth will be the egg meeting. That's it, that's all.
Thank you very much. I don't know if Ms. Leah got all of that. Are you able to forward it? That would be great. Thank you very much. Anybody else for the event calendar? No? Alrighty, so I guess we can put the motion forward to receive the event calendar as amended. Oh, Counselor Cromwell would like to make that motion. All right, all those in favor? Eight and, and opposed, none, eight and zero. Thank you. Eight point two calendars, page seventy-four of your agenda. Should we go around the room? Or do we like to start with Counselor Wallack? You're good? Thank you. Counselor Chamsik?
Um, February fifth, we have the setup for the women's conference. On the seventh is, um, the Executive Northern Lights Library System. The tenth is FCSS. Um, sorry. Oh, um, eighteenth is Village Library. Twentieth is Town Library and also an E O E P we're starting. The twenty-fourth is the Celebrating Rural Women's Conference. The twenty-eighth is Northern Lights Library Regular Meeting. Pardon me? Um, I think it's, we could do River View Room, Mark.
Oh, just a meeting, sorry.
Yeah. No, that's February sixth. Um, in March. Sorry, I think I. Um, I think we have an A L T meeting on the fourteenth. And on the twentieth, I have twen- town. The eighteenth is the village. But we will be at RMA. And that's all.
You're busy. Very busy, Counselor Hall?
There is no Greater North meeting on the twenty-fourth. That's just an error on the calendar. And I guess I just, I had a question regarding, um, my notes from the last month's calendar. I don't have a note that says we amended the time of the MPC meeting. But I know that earlier this week, the MPC meeting was at nine o'clock and not nine thirty as in the calendar. And so I'm wondering, did we make a motion to move it to nine o'clock? Or did it just get changed?
I believe it was discussed to change and the agenda package came out at nine AM on the front of the agenda. When the agenda was submit was handed out, yeah. Okay, um, anything to add?
So there was no council motion. My notes are correct.
Um, as far as I know, it was discussed in the calendars. I would have to go back and review the, uh, livestream to tell you for sure. But, um, I'm pretty sure it was the conversation that took place. You believe it's, okay, yeah. And so it would have been, um, in that motion to accept the calendars. Go ahead.
There's an ARMS multiplex meeting on March twenty-fourth. I'm just wondering if the Committee of the Whole Meeting for March was rescheduled, because I don't have a new date for it here.
Is there a date that you can think of you would like for your Committee of the Whole Meeting, Counselor Minns?
I'd like to correct you. That's our Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I'm, I'm referring to Ms. Chair. Thank you.
I don't know, under, uh, yeah, cuz it falls right into the, uh, RMA, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we could, we could move it to the twenty-fifth, or if there's not a lot to discuss at that point in time, we could actually just move all the information to the next meeting. It's, it's, it's. I guess I'd be looking at administration on, uh, how they feel. We can talk about it later too and come back, but.
Yeah, Madam Chair, yeah, I mean, there's, there's meetings in February that you could still. It's a good point. We can't have it during that, that time councils at RMA. We will need to reschedule and/or counsel. We've got meetings in Fe- February that, you could certainly do that.
Yeah, you betcha. So I think we can, we can have that discussion and first, first meeting in February, we can, we can figure it out on calendars. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Is that fine? Okay. Okay, anything else to add, Counselor Anderson? You're good? Okay, Counselor Cromwell?
February twenty-five, twenty-six, Water North Coalition Meeting in Grand Prairie.
February twenty-five and twenty-six? And I'm sorry, was, which one?
Water North Coalition in Grand Prairie.
What it is, is it's gonna coincide. I was gonna talk about it here. And I sent out an email this morning on information just, just regarding the water management in the Al- Alberta's Boreal twenty twenty-five. It's a conference that, uh, gets put on by the, uh, Mighty Peace, uh, W-PAC and, and, uh, Lesser Slave River, W-PAC and Athabasca Watershed Council, W-PAC with Olms is there. It's a two-day conference. Last year, they had an amazing turnout of a hundred and twenty people. So this year, they, they thought they'd try it again. It's a two-day conference and, and, uh, whoever wants to go can go to it, just gotta put your name in. So, so, and, and Water North Coalition, I think, is gonna be involved in that. That, that they usually have a meeting there around that time, so. I'm contemplating of possibly going to it myself, cuz I think it's, uh, there's lots of great information, the way it looks like. When I went to the, uh, Olms, uh, Athabasca Watershed Council, uh, conference last year in, in Hinton, the, the information that was shared there was, was, was it's really, really good. So, so this would be a good conference.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Was that the conference that we went to and?
No, that was Fire and Water. This is kinda like the, not, not, not the same thing. That was, that was all water and and, uh, wildland fires kinda work out together. Um, I think Mr. Beck was.
Madam Chair, just if you wanna continue discussion of the calendars, no problem. Our MLA is here.
He has arrived, okay.
Just so you're aware.
Yep, I appreciate that. I think we can pretty much, um, wind up calendars, calendars for now and, and have it for the discussion.
Can come back, yep, yeah.
Okay, so we'll come back to calendars. Uh, we'll pause, table them for after our delegations. And yes, um, absolutely, um, we'll take a recess for probably five minutes. Is that sufficient? So five-minute recess, please. We will return at ten seventeen. How are you?
Good to know.
Good to hear. Thank you so much for being here today, uh, Mr. Van Dyken, Emily Van Dyken. Uh, we really appreciate it. Uh, we are live streaming, so of course, as C A O pointed out, the microphone is beneficial for those folks to hear us. Um, I believe we, uh, you probably know everyone, but we'll start with introductions for sure. And so to my right.
Uh, Rob Minns, Division Eight, uh, Baptiste Lake, on Lake Area.
Good morning, Natasha Kapitanic, uh, excuse me, Representative for New Pine Creek, Nook and Collington. Good morning, Natasha Kapitanik, uh excuse me, Representative for New Pine Creek, Nook and Collington.
Good morning, welcome Gary Cromwell, Far North, uh Blue Jay, bring that up to including the Wandering River area. Thanks for being here.
Uh Glenn Van Dyken, the MLA for Athabasca Barhead, Westlock.
Fantastic, go ahead.
Uh Bob Beck, CAO.
Leah Blair, Recording Secretary.
Jordan Schenkelberg, Communications Coordinator.
Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three, which is the Caslin Boyle area.
Brett Hall, I reside in Division Four, which is southwest Athabasca.
Kelly Chapstick, Grassland, Crossfield, Port areas.
And good morning, Camille Wall, Division Nine, North of the River.
And I'm Councilor Holland from Division Five, which is east of Athabasca, Parkview, Amber Valley, um Paxton areas and the great many some divisions just in the south of town. So again, thank you so much for being here. I know you're a very busy person and um we had a few topics that we forwarded to you, that we were hoping to have that conversation about. Uh, one of them being um funding for the Highway sixty-three road rescue coverage, the other one being the Alpac Bridge. Uh, and our concerns there, and the third one uh being heliports. Are those the same?
Yes.
You have ready to go? So I'll just, um if I may, uh well, if we could start with the topic of um funding for Highway sixty-three road rescue coverage. Um, we want, first of all, want to thank you so very much for the support that you have given our community and continue to give to our community. Um, it is very well appreciated. Um, and if we just uh go through with our concerns with regards to Highway sixty-three road rescue coverage, um it is a twenty-four-hour road uh rescue coverage that we have on a hundred and twenty-seven kilometer section of Highway sixty-three from north of Atmore to Mariana Lakes, uh received funding. Uh, we did receive funding for two additional years in April twenty-twenty-four. And we'd like to say thank you very much for that. But we will need to um have ongoing annual funding to continue to ensure travelers' safety. Uh, the Road Rescue Program was introduced in twenty-eleven and funded in partnership between the Government of Alberta and Athabasca County and continues to operate today. And then to ensure sustainability, Athabasca County, uh of course, is requesting a long-term annual financial commitment from the Government of Alberta to maintain and enhance the Athabasca County Fire and Rescue Project on Highway sixty-three. So I guess I will turn it over to you as um the support that's um, you know, we're asking for continued support, of course.
Yeah, no, thank you for that, and thank you for the opportunity to present and answer questions. Um, sorry for the delay, uh things come up all of a sudden and we have to have conversations
Absolutely.
amongst our, my colleagues, uh so um with regards to the Highway sixty-three uh emergency response uh coordination, I, I guess the, the last time we were dealing with it, or not the last time, but initially dealing with it when it became a concern that that it was going to be a program that would be uh no longer available. Municipal Fairs did step up and and uh commit to funding for an additional two years, I believe. Um, and uh with the understanding that there was hopefully going to be um collaboration amongst the uh, the three municipalities that are essentially um impacted by uh that, that section of road, so Athabasca County, Lacklavish and Wood Buffalo. Um, I believe at that time, there was a hope that there would be um uh uh intermunicipal collaboration and agreements signed for um implementation, I think in budget year twenty-twenty-six, if I'm not mistaken. They continue to lobby municipal fairs, because they're the ones essentially handling this, this item and um like last time, I'm, I'm gonna just reflect on how lobbying went last time, like, like last time, we really didn't know until right at the very end. Like very right at deadline time, and oh, okay, I, I, I would continue to encourage you to uh move in the direction that um that was outlined in the initial uh agreement. I, I think uh the sense I get is that the government is concerned that if we continue down this road, that we're going to see more and more of these throughout the province, uh these types of asks, and um unless we can develop other mechanisms, it's going to be hard to implement one-offs, so uh I, I would say that uh the best way or the, the surest way to, for Athabasca County to um to know that the service they, they believe is needed along that stretch of road is to move in a direction for municipal collaboration, and I don't know where that's at, but I otherwise it will be eh at the uh essentially at the um discretion of government at the time. And we can never be certain one way or the other.
Appreciate your words. We definitely have letters of support from the RMWB as well as from Lacklavish and um definitely going to be moving forward and working uh towards agreements, I hope, um so that we can um, as you mentioned, work collaboratively collaboratively with our neighbors. Um, do we have anybody uh around the room who would like to?
If I may, if I may, yeah, breathe, uh one thing I would ask is if, if you do have those letters of support, if, if, if I could actually get a copy of those, if that's possible, uh it, it helps in moving discussions along.
Absolutely.
To prove to municipal affairs that, hey, these discussions are happening, and we'll, we'll continue to monitor that.
Appreciate that. Oh, yeah, for sure, we'll get those to you. Uh, right, made that note, awesome. All right, um, Councilor Hall.
Thank you for the, those comments, uh and, and I recall, and I think we're all aware of the letter that came from Municipal Affairs specifically with that encouragement to work with our neighbors. I, I think it's important from my own perspective, though, that government understands this is not a municipal responsibility. And, and so even in doing that, it's pushing it on us. Um, and so while we tackle it, like this is a piece of road unlike almost any other road in the province. There isn't, you know, one of the most significant economic engines and resource revenue drivers of the province is at the end of it, and it's the life, it's the, the single thread connecting it. And unlike other highways, there's not a community every thirty kilometers that has a volunteer fire department that could come out and do this work. So it's, it's not the same. And given the vast resource wealth that comes out of the Northeast, I think the Northeast would like some acknowledgement that um to see some of those, those funds applied back to, to benefit, and certainly it's it's uh really, for me, partly a question of whose responsibility, and so I, I will continue to advocate uh through council, that there's a, there's a significant role for the Government of Alberta in that room.
Yeah.
And, and just for clarity, council also had a motion where we were prepared to not do it. So it's, it's not a, you know it's not a given that it will happen if there's no funding.
Yeah, so I, I, I guess one thing that I, I'm constantly faced with is that discussion about whose responsibility is it? Um, I'll, whether it's uh uh from public safety, whether it's from, from health, wh- wh- all the different departments will, will come back to me and say, eh essentially, emergency response is a municipal responsibility. Um, eh that the province comes as a partner in that, in, in a lot of respects, um so I, you know, like that's, that's a, a dichotomy that, that is really hard to um hard to overcome. Like, we, we, we take a look at fire response and, and uh um criminal response and that, that type of thing, and, and, and it's always partnership agreements that allow these to actually exist. At the end of the day, I, you know, municipal affairs will come back to me, it's a, you know, emergency response is the jurisdiction of, of the municipality. Eh, and um how we partner with that has to be seen by all municipalities as being equitable, I'm gonna suggest. Uh, I understand the, the concern about uh the highway being essentially uh different from most highways in, in the province, but I, I, I could also I also hear from other, other municipalities with their concerns and in their same statements of this stretch of road between uh many of the northern communities. Long stretches of road with hardly any communities in between, so um eh, eh, I, in the one thing I do hesitate to utilize is that argument with regards to the funds that the Northeast is putting into the, into the general revenue of the province, I I'll fully admit that as a northern representative, we utilized that conversation many times. Uh, but it, 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 it's a hard conversation to actually um uh use if we're asking for special consideration versus fair consideration. So, so I do believe that we as northern representatives are all required to advocate for fair and equitable treatment. Special treatment is a harder one to get over, and, and, you know, like, I'll I'll continue to advocate for the, the reality of the stretcher road that, that is so vast and um and the, the, the amount of industrial traffic on the road and, and the like, but it is becoming harder and harder to make the case, I'm gonna, I'm gonna admit, yeah.
Thank you for that, Councilor Cromwell.
Thank you very much, Minister. Yeah, not to uh argue and unargue, but then we could talk about fair treatment and what the north doesn't get that most of the urban rural municipalities get, just in lines of internet in terms of power affordability, cellular coverage, that there are many things that would be considered fair that are not fair to the north. And sometimes you have to give on one to take another, but we're not gonna go down that path. My question for you, sir, was that you were talking about different municipalities who have outlined their needs and their concerns. Would the Office of the Fire Commissioner uh through their uh MAPF forty-four, their, their new fire reports not have data on what type of call volume they have on big number highways, on stretches um not dissimilar to what we have, and maybe actually use that data as empirical evidence on what is justifiable, what is required. I know that municipalities have to send in reports to the OFC. And I'm sure they have a database that, up until this moment, I haven't even thought about where they do that for billing, they do that for staffs. Well, maybe that's something that needs to be looked at by different levels of government to really go and go, here's how we prove your case for you. Here are the numbers. We monthly get a stat from our Protective Services Department, what our fire services do, what our CPOs do. And I'm confident that, though it may not be a chart with, you know, painted outlines on a highway, but there is information available through the OFC that might be beneficial either way you look at it.
Eh, yeah, so I'm, I, I've taken note to uh, to, to take a look at possibly trying to get some of that data. Um, because that's the first time I've heard of you know, like, let's take a look at what, what data is available. Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of any particulars that way. Um, it's something that possibly, as we continue to advocate for service, um that if we discover, and, and I would encourage uh the, the county to maybe take a look at if there's possibility that you can get information, if, if there's discovery that, okay, yeah, these are uh significant um abnormalities in, in what's required for service in this location, then, then I think that we build on the case. So I, I, I think that all that type of information, that type of data is helpful in making a case for for uh special programming, I'm gonna suggest, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, when looking at statistics and whatnot to justify the Highway sixty-three road rescue, one of the key points that I think needs to be highlighted is the access to medical response. Um, if you crash, or some traveler crashes at Crow Creek, it's not that the ambulance is coming from Wandering River to get to them. That one, ambulance has to be dispatched from Boyle, Lacklavish, Athabasca to even get to those travels, so I think the important thing that the Highway sixty-three road rescue serves is to bridge that gap, to ensure that emergency response is reaching those in need and able to bridge that gap between when the uh medical first responders can be dispatched and get to that location. I really think that's important for the safety and security of travelers on Highway sixty-three. There's a lot of great people that commute back and forth to Fort McMurray from our region and further, and they can't be stranded out there for hours waiting for just an ambulance. There, somebody has to get there to respond, and I think that's a that's a key point of this service, is most other regions have, somebody can get there in some timeframe, this, it's not coming from Wandering River, they have to come from further, and the Highway sixty-three road rescue bridges that gap.
So, eh, and, and again, I'll, I'll encourage you to continue to use that that strategy of response with your discussions with your uh neighboring municipalities as, as a critical part of it, and in, in building that case um as we move forward.
So anybody else would like to weigh in? All right, thank you very much for your words. Um, topic number two that we had, uh that was a, a very important topic, uh Alpac Bridge. And I'll just give you the quick issue here and, and um I will discuss around the table again. The Alpac Bridge, uh as you know, requires significant repairs and maintenance to serve Athabasca County businesses and residents and the economic development of the region. The economic importance of this bridge to the region requires funding from the province to continue to serve the region. Uh, STIP funding or a joint partnership between the province, the county and Alpac in maintaining this key infrastructure is required to ensure the economic well-being of the region. Um, I believe we are currently uh looking at um a maintenance bill of about one point nine million, if, and it, I believe it's increased, of course, due to the inflation and, and costs increasing. Um, I understand Alpac is prepared to also help and contribute financially, but as you know, as, as a small municipality, uh it is a huge chunk of our budget. Um, and we definitely are um hoping for advocacy uh from you as well with regards to uh helping us get that STIP funding, and um I'll turn it over to Deputy Reed Minns.
Morning. It's a, it's a huge uh economic driver for uh this, this Alpac Sea Road Bridge is a huge economic driver for, for coming across there. Back in uh, what was it uh when that bridge was put in uh Alberta Transportation, the Alberta government paid for the whole thing and everything, and then somehow through the process, it was a bridge like that crossing Athabasca River was downloaded onto, onto supposedly the municipality. And, and as we see what's going across the river right now and on eight thirteen, there's no way that the uh municipality would ever be able to, to put that across again, right? So, so what we're mainly looking at is, is to have some, some uh participation between the county the Alpac and, and, and the government to, to help even on maintenance on a bridge like that. You know, or single span bridges are fine and dandy for Athabasca County to look after, but on a, on a class A huge spanned bridge like that, that's, that's, that's overwhelming in a way, so, so uh and, 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 and not only is it there for Alpac, what we found out now that the roads are paved and everything going to Sea Road and the K Roads are paved, there's more than just Alpac using that roadway, it's uh especially as things grow in, in the north, in around Martin Hills and, and up into the Wauwawisqaw area. And that, and it's a, it's a uh and it's actually a uh throughfare now for the indigenous people to run back and forth across. You know, it's a lot closer for them to get from, from You know, it's a lot closer for them to get from, from one First Nations back over to the other First Nation. So, so they're using a lot too. So it's a, it's a, it's a definite benefit for, for everybody to be able to maintain that bridge, so. That's what we're looking through, through STIP funding and that, and, and trying to move that forward for the it went from a one point nine million uh estimate, now it's sitting at about two point three million for the uh, for the repairs onto that bridge. And now it's so, so that's what Athabasca is looking for is a little bit of cooperation from the provincial government to be able to. And if it's through strip, STIP, great uh to be able to maintain that, that unit there. I know we're asking a lot and everything, but I just want to cut in here real quick and just say thank you very much for the Water for Life, uh sixteen million dollars out to Baptiste Lake Island Lake area for the, for the water line. I know you're a big advocate, helped us along there, and I think when we were talking about the, the uh cooperation and collaboration between municipalities, that's a huge one there. Cause we got, what, we have six summer villages and Athabasca County dealing together and, and I think uh we were all very shocked to even get that Water for Life grant and, and, and I really contributed to, to the collaboration of the municipalities plus your, your help was very gracious on that. Thank you very much for that. So now getting back to, to the Alpak.
Well, I, I'll, I'll speak a little bit to the Water, Water for Life project and, and I continue to encourage uh representatives to keep uh myself in the loop, because that's, that's a big part of uh success in, in advocacy is having the information.
Right.
And so thank you for the work that you've done with the uh, with the uh commission to move things forward as well. With regards to the Alp, Alpak Bridge and, and when it first came across my desk, I the, the question was, well, whose responsibility is it? Like that, that's because of the, the, the span of that bridge over a major river, um I would have my, my first inclination was, well, that must be a provincial responsibility. Yeah, as we dug into it a little bit more, then we discovered that, well, the province um built it, yes, as an incentive to get the, the mill actually in place and as the, to give the ability to attract that economic driver into the region. And, and I, I would agree that it's, it's a huge economic driver in this region, right? For my constituency, pretty much east-west.
Yeah, all the way across.
Uh, it, it is employing a lot of people throughout there. Not just at the plant, but in all their service industry and in landlords and in the like, so um. When it became more apparent that it was under the local roads, uh roads, bridge program, then we, we had to have discussions about proper maintenance and, and versus rebuilding bridges. It seems like most of the STIP funding lands up rebuilding bridges, as opposed to possibly having enough money to do proper maintenance. And, and I know last fiscal um budget deliberations, uh working closely with Transportation Minister Dreschen, you know, the, the, the consideration was can we um can we get an increase to uh STIP funding to traditionally has been at fifty million? And for myself as a, as a rural representative, I believe it's, it's a disservice to our rural infrastructure. Uh, the counties in, in my jurisdiction, uh the amount of bridges within my jurisdiction probably outnumber many of the, the constituencies uh uh throughout the province. And so it has been a, a significant concern of mine that it is not fully addressing the need. And I think we can recognize and I'll go back to, this is where I utilize the argument that the funding is coming out of this region and I don't believe that we're getting uh equitable response in maintenance of this infrastructure. That being said, the funding stayed at fifty million dollars uh last budget year. Um, Treasury Board and Finance, they have a mandate to ensure that we uh continue forward with uh balanced budgets. And um the lobby effort was not successful. I, I continued to lobby for an increase. I, I believe that uh let's put it this way, I believe that rural infrastructure uh assists in the creation of wealth in this province far more than what our large urban partners with their highly, their costly transportation pro- projects that alleviate stress on, on on their networks or the, that's what they hope with their with their light rail and, and many of those projects. I, I think we're doing a disservice to the wealth creation in this province by not fully recognizing the need on these uh programs, so. Um, to me, as a representative, I, I will continue to trumpet that message because I believe it's accurate. And, and I, I believe that in this case we're, we're setting rural Alberta, rural Alberta industry up for failure. And, and that's bad for all Alberta. So um I will agree that the, these are high priorities. I you know, I, I'm just thinking, this is some, a thought that came to me just in, when you, when you were describing it, Rob, was have we considered lobbying? Cause it's local road, have we considered lobbying for secondary highway standard on that section of road? And I don't know what that entails.
Can, can I answer that?
Yes, okay.
Uh, we, we actually did uh a while ago, we actually uh talked to the, to the government about putting uh uh three numbers on those roads and that, and they, they, they didn't really want to have anything to do with it. Because, because it's more, it's more maintenance and, 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 and infrastructure to them, right? So in, in the agreements through Alpak and, and Athabasca County was the sea road, the K road were, were, were owned by the county as local roads. And then uh Alpak was the, the main driver for the maintenance on it, so. And then the uh grassland and Alpak connectors going into the mill were maintained by, was still local roads bigger than secondary standards and uh they were still looked after by Athabasca County, so. I can't really remember point blank why the government kind of wanted to stay away from that other than I think it is just due to the fact of the maintenance and everything. You're in the middle of middle of kind of like nowhere, but, but there is a lot of economic traffic going across that now. The county and Alpak and the provincial government worked hand in hand on a lot of uh resource road projects to get the K and the sea roads uh uh maintained into asphalt, not so, so we have worked together lots on, on a lot of this, the, the, the government worked together with the with the MD of uh opportunity to get the rest of their portion of, of the sea road uh put into asphalt also, so, so it's there, you know, it, it, it would be just uh we're, we're, we're hoping that we can lobby a little bit more and, and try to get some maintenance on the, on the Alpak Bridge covered by all three entities instead of just two.
Yeah, but, but I, what I need in, in maybe that information is available, but what would help me is, is if we can show other industry making significant utilization of that piece of infrastructure, that it's not just uh an Alpak Bridge, that it is being utilized by other industry, that would, that would actually be helpful for me to, to bring forward more of that conversation. If, if we can get a hold of some of that type of data.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, as of last week, there's a thirty ton weight restriction on the Athabasca Bridge, so all industry is going across the Alpak Bridge.
Yeah.
Um, every farmer has to go that way. It's gonna, if this bridge doesn't get done quicker than scheduled, it's gonna make a huge on, impact to our community. And uh so if you can push them a little bit to get that bridge done, that'd be great too.
So in all reality, the, the, the fact that the limitation is on, on the bridge here on eight thirteen um in that the utilization of the Alpak Bridge has become a significant uh necessity. That elevates the discussion, absolutely. So maybe it's a benefit or a blessing in disguise that this has occurred. The, the eight thirteen uh highway bridge over Athabasca River will continue on as scheduled. I, I was disappointed it had to go over two winter seasons, but that was essentially the, the, we, we can't do it in one winter season, so.
Yeah, they say it's not supposed to be done till twenty-six. So it's gonna be another year and a half. That's what the sign says.
Be done this fall, I believe.
Sign says twenty-six.
Maybe they got cushioned. Well, I, you know, that's, that's a question I'm gonna ask because I, my understanding that it would be, that was gonna be available this fall. That was my understanding, so that's the last information I had.
And on that, the uh new bridge may be open to traffic, but the project may not be done till twenty twenty-six just because of decommissioning of the old bridge and all the cleanup stuff afterwards, but um I really appreciate your comment on the cost to maintain versus the cost to rebuild bridges. Our, the RMA recently released a report on the bridge infrastructure deficit in Alberta that states that uh the annual cost to maintain the rural bridges in the current depreciated condition would be three hundred and seventy-three point one four million dollars annually. And that's just staggering. It's not something that we could even consider affording, let alone to have to rebuild those bridges, so. Um, I really appreciate your advocacy on trying to increase the funding for STIP province-wide, um because it is something that we're going to have to continue to utilize on a fairly consistent basis.
I mean, and echoing those comments, I do appreciate that, that work and the comments and the, the thinking around the the idea that it's a responsible thing to fix minor problems rather than wait for them to become major problems, like we, we have to get away from this, ignore it until it's a catastrophic failure that all go, levels of government seem to wait for. I think the other thing for me is when I, I consider other decisions that have taken hundreds of thousands of dollars of funding out of our county budget, whether it's the tax holiday, whether it's the elimination of well drilling and equipment tax. Rural municipalities need help. And in our, in our county alone, um I've lost count of the hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue that we've lost to the, the well drilling and equipment tax. That's money that's just simply not available to redirect toward these capital projects as industry grows, so um. The other thing I would, wanted to point out about the report Council Anderson mentioned is the exponential rise in, in repair costs over the next, I think it's five years. And I, I don't want to quote it because I don't have it on the top of my head, but I'm sure we can get you a copy of that because it's uh, it's jaw dropping. How, how quickly the, the repair costs are going to, to change from you know, in the low single-digit billions to high double-digit billions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, so, yeah, yeah. I guess, I guess there's a hope that the inflationary costs increases on, on infrastructure maintenance and, and repair and construction is at a, is slowing down, but um all indications are that it's not and that we, uh, we continue to see uh a rise there, um. What, what, what I can say is that um the, the decision is uh made that the finance minister is challenged to come forward with balanced budgets and not to get into the spiral of paying today on the backs of tomorrow's citizens. So that's, that, that's the balancing that we're trying to do within government. Is it right or is it wrong? I, you know, I, I can hear arguments from both sides and, and recognize that there is potential either way. Currently, um finance is very focused on trying to ensure that we balance our budget in Alberta.
By not fixing today, we're dumping these, these expenses on tomorrow's citizens. And our kids, and they don't deserve that.
We're benefiting from it. You know, like I, I, I recognize that, that, that position. I also recognize that um we have a fiscal capacity um that has to be considered. And um is there catch-up that needs to be done? I don't, I don't know that that'll ever disappear. In my lifetime, we've always been trying to catch up. That's just the reality of essentially democratic processes that require you to get reelected every four years. That's the reality of it, and, and so um, does it go away? I don't think so. Um, does it challenge us to um endeavor to do better? Absolutely. Yeah. But I, I will be an advocate for ensuring that existing infrastructure, uh especially rural infrastructure is not sacrificed on the altar of progression, progression towards larger than white elephants, in my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Um, those words are well taken.
Yes.
Does anybody else have any further discussion with regards to Alpak Bridge? Cause we're running out of time. We do have another uh delegation. Would you like to chime in for sure?
Well, I would just like to uh reminder on, on LA, the City of Edmonton got two hundred and forty-one point six million just to bypass the traffic lights on the Yellowhead. All we're looking for is a little bit of money for a bridge.
So I, I'm gonna suggest to you that that was a failure of the system in um the uh I mean, municipal collaboration, I, I forget what the name of the, the, the board was, the Capital Region Board, I believe. I was a representative for Barhead, Morenville, Westlock during a period of time where I sat in on a number of these meetings with Capital Region Board to learn a little bit about how this all works, that we're all working together. I, I had a, a, a road network that was very high priority for the residents of the Sturgeon County in my constituency. It was number one on the list, and when the announcements came, um that Yellowhead Freeway became the priority. And the Gray Gibbon Drive, uh Gray Gibbon Drive uh was bumped as the priority. It became evident to me that as much as we work together, we don't. And so uh i- it's a challenge to each of us to help move the needle to try and ensure that priorities are properly researched and debated and, 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 and recognized. Otherwise, these collaborative mechanisms between municipalities will fail.
Thank you very much. All right, I think we can move to our very last topic, which is heliports. I don't have a fancy little write-up on that one. It's, it's still in discussion stage. Um, and I believe I, I have a personal question on, on the heliport. So where we're looking at is um Athabasca is, is looking at that, Boyle is looking at that. As we know, our um ambulance service is very tricky, as was mentioned earlier. Um, which of course heliports would um greatly supplement and if not save lives. Um, so I guess more than anything, when we look at the eligibility for heliports, uh AHS has criteria that they um follow, and we're very close to meeting that criteria. And so I guess the advocacy for me um personally um would be towards AHS and um asking for help on their end, uh financially, as well as, as with the criteria that, that they require. Um, but I'll turn it over to the rest of council uh for that conversation and uh we, we do have very short time, but um I'm quite sure there's conversation that's uh at the table for that. um, I'm quite sure there's conversation that's uh at the table for that. Who would like to? Anybody like to weigh in on the heliports? Pretty quiet bunch.
If, nobody's gonna say it, I'll, I'll say supportive. Look, we understand in rural Alberta, we can't have all the specialists and all the critical stuff five minutes down the hall or a five-minute drive away. But the ambulance system, we all know, is struggling. There are lots of times in, you know, the ham, in the village of Boyle, which is inside of our county and serves our residents. The ambulance is coming out of Smoky Lake or Saint Paul or somewhere far, like, we're, we're hours of waiting and our residents don't deserve that. They're Albertans, just like the guys in Edmonton and Calgary and Saint Albert. Um, so supportive something like a helipad would help create more fair and more equitable access to the emergency services that our residents deserve. And uh, we all get that, you know, we live in places that there are things that, that will happen in potentially my life or yours that will mean they're unsurvivable events just because of where we live. That is a bit of a trade-off, but we, we can as a, as a province and community do things to mitigate it.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, a, a friend said, described it like this once, and I like to quote him, he said that, you know, when you have a problem in Saint Albert, they roll you down the hallway to the specialist. That helicopter shortens our hallway and gets us there at a reasonable time, and um it's important.
Yeah.
Did anybody else want to weigh in?
Okay, thank you. And, and uh, I, I wanna commend the local representatives for the work that they've done um, on both heliports within Ath- Athabasca County, the discussion on the Boyle hel- helport and Athabasca. Um, it when, when this was brought up and I approached the uh health minister on it, uh, immediately I heard uh, AHS uh does not recommend or is not recommending that it's required, required in this jurisdiction. Um, I thought, okay, well, that's, that's where we're at. Uh, where do we go from here? One thing that um, we do see, uh, because there is, there is certain limitations around helicopter response and um and what, what the health minister and the department are, are hopefully moving towards is where, where we actually fix the ambulance response, both with regards to uh availability, positioning, having the equipment where it needs to be, when it needs to be there. The biggest challenge we have in, in, in northern Alberta, in, in our region is um people to operate the ambulances. Uh, human resource on, on ambulance uh occupancy has been a challenge and um, but I, you know, dispatching has, has been a challenge as well, and, and so we have seen changes on that that have resulted in positive results uh for my constituency, I believe. Uh, I've heard uh better stories compared to what I was hearing where an ambulance left the territory and stayed out of the territory for extended length of time, kind of thing. And so um the work is being done to try and, and increase and make available um the necessary tool, the ambulance response. Um, like, the reality is, is for Athabasca, they, they need the ambulance in order to have air response, whether it's fixed wing or helicopter, because it's at the airport. Um, Canada, some of the Canadian aviation regulations have worked to, to limit the ability of stars to land in certain areas, and, and that's an ongoing discussion if that's the right regulation, because they're, they're landing out in the middle of nowhere in, in apparently doing that safely, but then when they're gonna land in, in an area that they've landed for many, many uh, years, and now all of a sudden it's become unsafe, that's continuing discussion. I, I think the, the direction that the mayor of Boyle and the mayor of Athabasca Town are, are going is um in, in a way that can to get things accomplished. Are we gonna be able to find assistance, financial assistance in getting it accomplished? That's, that's the one area I'm not sure on. Um, so I continue to have conversations with both of those mayors to see the priority in the ability they have on how, how do we move forward. Um, it's not, it's, it's, it's not an isolated concern with regards to Athabasca County. It, I have the concern in other areas in, in the county. And, and a lot of times it just comes down to the discussion about fixed wing versus helicopter. Having both available um is, is uh um more reliable, I'm gonna say. And uh, by, by stationing out of the airport, you have more reliability on air transfer of patients. But we've got to fix the, the road ambulance concern. Like, that's, that's, I believe, should be number one priority.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I think we're, if everybody is, we've come to the end of our time, so I would like to uh thank you um very much for your words today. Um, they're greatly appreciated, as is your past and continued advocacy uh for our community. Um, it has and will continue to improve the quality of life for our residents, so thank you again for all you've done and all you continue to do.
If, if I may, one, one thing I did want to highlight to you as, as a council is the work that your volunteers on your community associations are doing. Um, in December, we had a number of decisions on, on grants made available to community organizations over, you know, over the last year. Uh, the Ag Society has been a very influential part of, of uh uh, your community social ne- network. Uh, but in December, um we had a number of grants uh through the Facility Enhancement Program that were uh received and accepted. Uh, and these are, are individuals in the community, some even outside of your community, but working for project in the community that are very helpful. Uh, so um Northern Nordic Club got assistance with equipment for their uh Muscade Creek Park. The uh Recreational Trails Association got sixty thousand dollars for essentially their Peace River Trail. Um, Community Enhancement Program for Athabasca River Runners Snowmobile Club um for equipment to maintain their trails, thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, I believe there's one here for uh Forfar, Forfar Hall, twenty thousand dollars, and this is uh on top of uh the grant they received earlier for facility upgrades, and they ran into some hurdles, and so we had to try and, and get that done. Uh, Vi- some Village of Island Lake Baldine, you receive twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars for their Baldine improvements, and uh the Royal Canadian Legion, thirty-four thousand five hundred and ninety for facility upgrades there. Your volunteers are doing great work, continue to encourage them, uh, continue to, to have them engage with me uh, uh, uh in, in, in all of these grants, that there were some that had approached me and some that hadn't. It quite often, I, I will give them a support letter to, to try and help them along in, in their grant writing. And, but this is critical work to our rural network social fabric, and uh it's man- matching grants. As a government representative, I see it as, wow, they, they've got a priority here. I'm gonna support them in their priority because they're doing great work on it, so um, I I have great respect for people that take the time to, to actually do the work at a local level and uh want to encourage them in that.
That's fantastic. Thank you for sharing um those stats. I know there's quite a few more grants that um we can add to that list. The Multiplex also was a recipient of several uh recent grants and, and which is huge, and and it's our volunteers that make the community uh tick. You know, they're the ones who keep things going, and and so shout out to all of those, and, and appreciate you mentioning that for sure here today, and I'm sure they will be as well. Absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
Everybody is, we'll take a small recess, um, approximately se- ten-minute recess. If that's uh, because we do have a delegate waiting at eleven, um, so maybe we'll shorten it to seven minutes. Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. Meeting to uh back-end session here. Um, thank you for your patience and, and for waiting for us here today. We are at item four point two on our agenda, page thirteen to thirty-five. And with us here today, we have the North Skeleton Lake Community Association, uh Brenda Thompson. And with us here today, we have the North Skeleton Lake Community Association, Brenda Thompson. Um, you have guests, so we will go around the room and do some introductions and we'll start on my right.
Uh, Rob Minns, Division Eight, Baptist Lake Island Lake Area.
Good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division Six, far north up to including Wandering River. Thanks for being here today.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Uh, Camille Wallach, Division Nine, North of the River.
Kelly Johnson, Division Seven, Brassland, Crossfield, Atmore Areas.
Brian Hall, I live in Division Four.
Welcome, Ashton Anderson, I live in Division Three.
My apologies, Natasha Kapchanek, Division Two, Collington, Minook and New Pine Creek.
And I am Tracy Holland, Division Five, which is east of Athabasca, so it would be Amber Valley, Paxton, Parkview Areas. And a bunch of really cute subdivisions down south. And with us for administration, we have Mr., go ahead.
Bob Beck, C A O.
Leah Blair, Recording Secretary.
Jordan Schenkeberg, Communications Coordinator.
And behind you, we have our, the Press, Mr. Cole Brennan, the famous Cole Brennan. And again, thank you so much for being here. Welcome and, and go ahead with your presentation, please.
Good morning, Reeve and Councillors, and thank you so much for this opportunity to introduce ourselves. This is Sharon Ziggman and I'm Brenda Thompson. We're both Directors of the North Skeleton Lake Community Association, which was established in August of two thousand twenty one. We would like to inform you today of our programs and initiatives developed by our enthusiastic group of volunteers. And to share our hopes and aspirations for our community. And Sharon, we'll start with our PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Councillors. So, as you can see, we have a beautiful lake of North Skeleton Lake and what the Community Association does. And what we're about is enhancing our community, bringing families and friends together, supporting our community and our county. And creating memories along the way. We have a few different programs that we've actually put into place, along with many events and courses and classes. One of our programs that we recently put together last year was our welcome bags. And in those welcome bags to any new resident in our area, we put in information from the county, from the Village of Boyle. Also from neighboring and surrounding businesses with their different incentives and trinkets. This has become very well received and appreciated by the new residents. And last year, we were able to put out eight new bags, so that meant eight new residents in our area. One of our proud moments and proud events is our winter carnival. We have usually hot dogs and, and chili. Uh, we do lots of games and uh, uh, different games and prizes for the kids and for adults. Last year, we did a turkey shootout on the lake. And we gave away turkeys for the closest to the, to the house. Uh, we also did a fifty fifty and with that money, we helped person actually got half of it and then uh, we used half of it in our donations. We like to, because we are received so well in our community, we like to give back to the community as well. So some of the uh, things that we have on the lake are skating. We have our ice shacks. We have, uh, it's open to everybody, not just us. We, we welcome everybody to come out. We also have a burn barrel. Which holds the ashes and it holds the wood debris from going into the lake, which we're proud again of. Uh, in the spring, we do a major cleanup down at our boat launch. And this cleanup is actually what helped my husband and I, two years ago, two and a half years ago, decide, make the decision to move to where we did at North Skeleton Lake. We wa- we walked down to the lake after looking at a couple of places. We saw how beautiful it was and how well it was kept. And we thought, at any other lake that we'd gone to, we didn't see this. And we thought, wow, the county does such a great job here. Later to find out, it was actually a, a bunch of volunteer people. We jumped into that as soon as we moved into our residence. We clean up all the debris from the beavers. We clean up any garbage that's been left behind. Sometimes bears get into the dumpsters, whatever, we clean it up. We mow the lawns, we whip or snip, we take care of it all. Some of the donation money that we've uh, worked hard for, in two thousand twenty three, we had two hundred and fifty dollars extra. So we donated it to the Boyle School Lunch Program. We had another two hundred and fifty that we donated to uh, adopt a senior at Christmas. We were able to buy five different quilts and put under the tree, have wrapped up and put under the tree so that all the seniors would have something at the lodge to open that morning. This year, we're very proud to say that we actually got to raise our, our amounts. And we had six hundred to the Boyle School Program, uh, Breakfast Program. And six hundred to the Angels in Motion for their Christmas toy drive. We feel that if we receive, it's, it's best to give back. Back to our launch area, as you can see how beautiful it is, we placed those tires strategically so that we keep the vehicles off the grass area. And uh, everybody that's driving down to the launch to put their boats in, they, you know, they can be guided also. What we do have an issue with is that far left corner. We have nowhere for our children to play. Except with the docking boats. Our launch is only really long enough to uh, walk out, maybe throw, pass a rod. So, uh, the pier, so, and then where the uh, private launches come in, everybody drives their boats in, or they launch that onto the boat launch, onto the ground. And the kids are swimming between boats and motors and fans. We really are looking to, on the right-hand side of the dock, hopefully build a beach area. It needs some maintenance anyway, so we're hoping we can get something there. Some of our classes that we've taught and put on for fundraising to enhance our launch. Are macrame classes and uh, this particular class, we had two classes. It was done in one of our community garages. And uh, it was sold out, like, it was, we couldn't keep up. We, we didn't know what to do, so we put on a second class. And we probably could have put a third and a fourth. Here we did, we moved into the Legion, rented the Legion for the day in Boyle, and we put on a Christmas craft. It sold out three classes and they sold out in forty-eight hours. We put on safety training courses by certified instructors, so water safety at the lake, everybody should be involved, right? We've had numerous Mandela Rock painting classes, uh, huge hits. And again, money fundraised to enhance our boat launch. We've also put on Canadian firearms safety courses. A- and just to let you know that these people are all from all over the place. Some come from Lacklippish, some come from Athabasca, they come from Boyle. They're also our own Community Association members, but this class here, we put two on, we had, we had to do it at the Legion, and we also have a huge waiting list for more classes for it. In the fall and in the spring, we do a bottle drive and this money goes into our donations back. We, it, it helps clean up the area. It also helps the people that are um, seasonal. They maybe don't have time to take their bottles off, so it turned out to be a good asset for us. We've done many different uh, lunch barbecues for the co-op. We used to do them also for um, uh, well, we've done for the Chamber of Carmers, but also um, no, the, the other grocery store. Byway. Byway. Bylaw. Sorry. So, this money goes back into donations back. We put on events for the community such as a Halloween Howl. You can see here, everybody's having a great time. The kids, the, the adults, everybody dresses up. And this was actually our first one and it was such a great hit. There was candy, there was parades, there was uh, hot dogs or concession. Games for the kids, prizes for the kids, prizes for best dressed. But this one is our biggest, biggest fundraiser and it's advertised very well. But it has much over exceeded our expectations. We've uh, got live music. We have a a car show and shine. We have a silent auction. We hold um, a concession, uh, games again for the kids. There's just so much going on this day and this was our second one this year and it just was such a hit. And, and uh, all of these are held down at the boat launch. We make room for those that don't want to participate with us, but still want to go uh, put their boats in. We make sure that there's room for them. And it's all worked out so well. We have people actually at the, on the lake that pull in with their boats to come to some of these events. So what we have found is we've come to the county before and asked for help and guidance and they've given us they've helped us with that. They helped us with how to get an information board put down at our county launch. And we've also built the uh, little library up in the community library up in the right. But we went to the co-op in um, Boyle, asked them how they could help, thinking maybe a discount. They actually donated all of the products and materials. So it cost us nothing, it cost the county nothing. And we've got a spot on our board for the North Skeleton Lake Community Association for the community and a spot specifically for county information. So we're here looking to work with and hopefully your help in some of the things that we'd like to help have to enhance our, our boat launch. And I'm gonna hand it back to Brenda.
Thanks, Sharon. Thank you, Sharon. Uh, I have submitted a request for assistance with funding um, prior to this meeting. And as Sharon has highlighted, our need for a safe and separate beach area for our children to play and our, our whole community. And I've done some research uh, using the County Maps uh, app on your county website to help substantiate our request. So just some comparative numbers. Okay.
Uh, it's not on.
It's not on there? Uh, the lots per subdivision, if you could please put that one up.
Is there something I need to do?
Okay, that's you. I'm a troublemaker, so.
Oh, so everyone has a copy of it anyway? Okay. Perfect. Okay.
It would be page thirty-five of your agenda.
That is our pamphlet that has our mission statement and that's for our information purposes for anybody coming to the community. We post that down in our uh, communications board, information board down there. So um, that's a, who, who are we and the information.
So I guess then I was given the wrong, I, I gave the wrong page number. I believe it is fifteen, sixteen and seven.
And I'll go, uh, it's lots per subdivision will be the first page?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be page sixteen.
Okay. Thank you. Um, again, I did the, I counted the lot numbers in the subdivisions based on the Maps app from the county website. So in our particular area, we have Sunset Villa with twenty-one lots, Paradise Valley fifty-three, Shadow Lane twenty, Perch Cove Estates eighteen and Pickrell Point sixty-three. Giving us a total of a hundred and seventy lots per this area that's being serviced by this boat launch. South Skeleton Lake, which is Bondas, Moatha and Harnahaw, have a total of five hundred and ninety-five lots. And when you average that out, they have one beach for every one hundred and forty-eight point seven five lots. I look to North Buck Lake, which includes Golden Nodding and Blue Heron. They have a total of two hundred and fifteen lots. And they have two beaches for a hundred and seven point five. So we have a hundred and seventy-five lots and we don't have a beach. And um, that exceeds what these others areas have. I, then the next page is the amenities. Okay, I looked at the amenities we have as well. Um, our area, North Skeleton Lake, a hundred and twelve lots. I've separated out Pickrell Point. We have a boat launch and a pier, which is county owned. We have one outhouse, which was replaced last year. Sorry, that's a typo. We have two picnic tables and they have been donated by residents in the area. We have the communication board and the lending library, as Sharon has highlighted. And our community members mow the grass, do the spring cleanup and maintain the boat launch area. Pickrell Point has sixty-three lots. They have a boat launch, a picnic table, fire pit and enclosed shelter. I do have some pictures of the area and it, it shows the shelter. And a picnic table that has a metal frame and is um, secured to a concrete pad and fire pit that is secured in the ground. We don't know where that came from, might be county. So um, Blue Heron has a hundred and thirty-five lots. They have a contract for mowing grass with the county and they receive a grant at the end of the season for that service. They have a playground, beach volleyball court, beach, two tetherball posts, two basketball courts, tennis court, pickleball courts, shuffleboard courts, two outhouses and a gazebo with a stage band access. And Golden Nodding has eighty lots. They have a ball diamond, a children's swim area, a beach, an outhouse with another one to be replaced. We, uh, they have playground with two swings and a slide, tennis court with an unusable surface, uh, picnic tables, boat launch and dock. County brings gravel until the boat launch annually. They have a well with a tap so that the residents can come and fill up their trailers for the weekend, whatnot. And they have streetlights. White Gull, I just brought that up because I noticed on the budget, under capital budget, they've been allotted seventy thousand dollars for a tennis court. So this is just some comparisons to help substantiate our request for funding. So, in summary, our goal with this introduction and presentation to you is that we as county members and community residents receive like amenities that the other associations and areas are enjoying. We understand that our physical area, boat launch area is not as big as others and uh, but our, we do have the number of lots and the population to support some of our wishes. We're not asking for ball diamond. We're not asking for tennis court or volleyball courts. What we would like though, is what has been promised by the previous infrastructure director. And that firstly is the solar light pole to be installed at the boat launch. This light pole um, would illuminate the skating and the evening boaters as well as give some security to the area of the boat launch. There has been untoward activities. And we've talked to some of the neighboring residents there and they see things that there's overnight campers and such. And so uh, as a deterrent, uh, we want to keep our area beautiful and welcoming for the family and friends that, that use it and community members. Secondly, we would really like the provision of a safe beach area. There's so many people that come down now with the beautification and the maintenance that we do for that area. We see people coming down for the day with their picnics and all their floaty toys and everything. And there's so many children. Right now, they are swimming and recreating with the boats and have to run out of the water when the boats come in. So we really are wanting and asking for a safe and separate swim area for our community members. This will avoid any injury and any litigation. Just, we, we want to avoid that. So yeah, yes, and the right-hand side of the boat dock. Lot, uh, yeah, the boat dock or pier, we think would be a feasible we think would be a feasible area to put this. It is adjacent to the grassy area that we maintain and we have the uh, tires to secure uh, safety and P, um, vehicles from going there. So we would love to go through the rest of uh, the outstanding promises made by your previous director, either after this meeting or in the near future, but these are our priorities at the moment. So again, thank you so much for your time and allowing us to present to you. And we really look forward to hearing from you soon with hopefully a positive consideration. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you very much for the information that you provided and your presentation, well done. Um, it's really appreciated when we hear from everyone from our community and, and obviously the passion is very strong in your community and, and as we mentioned earlier today, the volunteers that we have in our community are the fabric of our community, so thank you for all that you're doing. Um, I know we're short on time and we do have another delegate waiting, but i- in light of that, is there any questions that, that, yes, Council Cromwell?
Thank you very much. Uh, definitely have a lot to be proud of and I understand the need to uh, want to be equal. You were talking about a safe beach, have you talked to the Alberta government and looked into the regulations and what it takes to alter a beach especially with that grassy areas, that habitat and protected areas, have you looked into that at all?
Not as yet, uh, we're coming here first as we uh, on that side, there are posts and uh, we believe that then to be municipal. We know it's crown land beyond that. There are two subdivisions, uh, there's Perch Cove and they have a, a lot that was a municipal reserve and we looked at making, uh, when our, the previous infrastructure director came. She, we looked at maybe doing that because we already have a lot um, for beach area, but it's a steep hill. And so that uh, would not be, the expenditure would be, just be too great for that. So we have not gone further because we thought that this might be municipal and that's why we wanted to come to you first.
Okay, thank you.
Could I add to that?
Just quickly, thank you. On the right-hand side where we do do all of our events, the ground is quite crater-y. And uh, so it's kind of, it's, it's kind of dangerous, somebody's gonna trip. So we brought that up to the attention of our last uh, person that we came to the council for. Um, and they had suggested that they would come and they till that area to smoothen it out. And that they could bring a load of, of sand. So that's what we're looking for, have that particular spot leveled out again properly. And, and people from the past that have been there a longer than myself have said that it used to be beach there. So we're just looking to put it back.
I, I appreciate that, Madam Chair, may I? Thank you, uh, well, that brought me up to the last two things that I had written down to, to ask about. Uh, solar light at your boat launch. Uh, solar lights are great, I, I heard from my friend to my left how phenomenal they are. Uh, but you said promised by infrastructure, do you have any email? I haven't seen anything like that, and you mentioned then other promises by infrastructure. I would love to know what those documented promises are, because I haven't seen them yet. So I, I'm kind of a little bit left out on that part.
Certainly, and when we uh, began our association and we decided, you know, directions and whatnot. So then we began to just contact the county and we had different people to um, uh, to communicate with and, and whatnot. So the last person was the infrastructure director who came out and did a walkabout with us. And uh, she was open to our ideas and saw some potential and offered some suggestions. We initially went in asking for the solar light because it was something that we held. Um, we asked our community members for their input, what did they want us to do for them? And then we asked them, we had a list of several suggestions and we, they did a vote on it. So the solar light was their choice, our community members' choice. So we initially um, liaised with our director and offered, can we uh, partner uh, with you on this? And then through her research and um, the cost of the poles, they only came in parking lot packages and whatnot. And we talked with her about the uh, solar light and she gave us guidance on to the strength and size of the solar light that we needed. And then in the end, it came to, no, we will install this for you uh, by freezing. Yeah, purchase and install it and by the end of uh, or before freeze up. And. Yes, before freeze up then. And um, then uh, we hadn't heard anything for a while. We went down to the boat launch and saw there are three motion sensor solar lights attached to our communications board, which is something we had previously said no to when offered because it wasn't what our um, community had advised us they wanted. So um, when I questioned that, I was told that no, this is the solution and there would be no other. So that's why um, we met further with Ashton and we finally came to you. You weren't our first choice, a little intimidating, I have to say during this presentation. So, but here we are, and so yes, we do have emails of um, and with the other electronic signature and whatnot, okay? So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great job, don't worry.
Yes, thank you, well done for sure, Council Minns.
I want to thank you for the, 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 you know, the information that you brought on and the great work that you guys are doing and everything. Um, one thing I do know now is a long time ago, working in a bed and shore of a, of a lake was easy. You just, you just did it, right? And, and over the, uh, through the environment and, and uh, process and, and water, you know, and environmentally, it's, it's, it's tough to work on bed and shores anymore. We have a hard time even getting into our boat launches. It takes, takes years to, to get the okay to go into a boat launch and repair it. And that, and, and now to, to start working on a beach is it's uh, like out in, out in uh, in Division Eight there, out around Baptiste Lake. We have a, a county beach there that, that used to be beautiful, sand and everything. We can't even, we can't even work on it anymore. And the kids are, the kids are actually in the same predicament out there as it sounds like with yourselves is, is uh, is swimming in around where the boats come in and stuff like that. So, so that's just a heads up, I just want to give you the, the environmentally is, it's, it's very tough to work on bed and shores. The other thing is, is uh, you brought up the White Gull uh, tennis court. What ended up happening there was um, uh, I can't remember the date. It was a summer village, uh, White Gull was a summer village and when they were a summer village entity, municipality, whatever you want to call them, they'd made that, that uh, tennis court there themselves. And when they came into uh, Athabasca County, that came along with it. And so what ended up happening was you got that infrastructure there and, and uh, so we needed to fix up the, 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 the pad. It, it's just a resurfacing of, of the actual existing tennis court, which, which was a basketball court, which is actually a pickleball court, but, but it was there. It was already there when Athabasca County took it over, so that's, that's why that was. If you've got the infrastructure, may as well try to maintain it the best you can, so, but great work what you guys are doing.
Thank you, and um, yeah, and that, so I brought that up just because it wasn't in the recreation uh, budget. So the funds were available through another capital project, but I appreciate the information on that, I did not have that. Um, as far as the uh, dealing with the environment and, and things and getting the beach area. The white elephant in the room, should I say, is James H. Brown, who has developed a large beach area. And he's got two. So, and we're, we're asking for help. If we have, if we go this way, how do we navigate it? And we're asking for a partnership and, and we're not adverse to going the right way. We just want to see something, something we can get back to our residents, our members with. And yeah, we're, we're not adverse to going the right way, others maybe not so much, uh.
I guess just to follow that up on that, that, that the white elephant thing is on private land. As soon as a municipality starts dealing in, in with environment and that, they have a handle on top of us that, that we can only do so much. Private land, it's like, they, they, they kind of, at times look the other way. But a municipality, holy man, they'll take you to task real quick.
And, and we have to be. So even if it was just uh, coming in and leveling that ground for us and not touching the water.
It's, it's environmentally, it's, it's, especially when you start talking about bed and shore.
Yep, there's a certain distance.
And it is huge, it is huge to try to do anything along.
So do you have ideas where we should be going?
Absolutely, um, when I, I quickly looked yesterday at the GOA website and you know, there's uh, the natural boundaries that might give you some of the information and contacting the Alberta Land Surveyors as well. Um, I know that there's plans of submissions, so on, so forth, that can be included into some of those plans. As noted, the environmental and um, municipal reserves could also be those issues. Finding out that information if they're on that parcel of land first, um, I think would be imperative to help you go along. Once again, great work that you guys do, the, the other question I have, because when you noted some of these amenities, I want to point out that some of these groups, uh, some of these other groups also have a casino, do you guys have casino status?
No, we um, applied last year for, through the AGLC uh, to have a fifty-fifty raffle, actually is what we started with, and no, we don't qualify for that. I have um, since talked to them and to be able to do our fifty-fifty for our upcoming uh, winter carnival, we can get a limited, cause uh, a limited uh, license. So, but we are very um, limited in that uh, two dollars per ticket and raise a maximum of five hundred dollars, five hundred for the recipient and five hundred for our donation account. Uh, so a, a total of a thousand dollars. So uh, yes, Blue Heron has a casino, they do a casino every eighteen months. And I don't know how uh, we are already flagged because we have previously asked for a license and were denied. So from the information I gathered from her the other day was that we wouldn't be approved because of our I have to apply as a different group.
Well, and I hate to cut you off because I know we're on that timing, but one of the other things I've recently learned and not a hundred percent correct on it is that if you have a non, if you do not have a nonprofit status, I believe that you are able to do silent auctions and live auctions outside of the realms of raffle, raffles. Just to let you know, I believe they're different, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Council Chams and Council Anderson.
I'd like to thank you for taking the time to come here today. I know this was a lot of work to put together and I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate all the work that your group does in the community. It's a lot of undertaking and it's fantastic to see volunteers stepping up and trying to improve our community the way they have. Um, you mentioned looking to partner with the county to maintain this area for the community. Are you opposed to an agree, like a written agreement um, between the two to kind of outline who would be required um, or the the scope of what you could do in that area and just kind of outline that?
I can't see that we would be opposed to that, we do have a letter of um, oh, agreement, it's a different, yeah, uh, with the county to do uh, maintain the uh, area, do the grass mowing and such. We haven't seen that or I know it was to be updated, but, and we haven't seen it, haven't signed it or have a copy. Uh, but going forth, if we have the information, we're certainly willing to look it over and I can't see a problem with that.
Wonderful.
Better understanding.
And I know administration's going to be bringing us further information at a future meeting about this delegation. But can you just confirm, have you received funding from the county for the maintenance you're currently doing to that space?
No, we have not, and that was a, a budget anomaly that I noticed under the uh, uh, I call it an anomaly, it's not, sorry. Um, when I looked under the budget, Baptiste Lake and PAC is receiving thirty-eight hundred dollars a year for their maintenance. Um, and Blue Heron is receiving a grant at the end of the season for doing their agreement uh, for maintaining their um, area as well. And this is one of the items on the outstanding promissory list.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and, and I'm very, very fast. So even if we did do uh, casino, because we do a lot of fundraising, we do have money. It was our initiative and our money that we were gonna put towards our solar light and pole to begin with and then told that uh, you, yous would do it and pay for it. Even if we have the money set aside to do some of the things we want to do, are we just allowed to go do them? Like, how does Blue Heron and how does, how do these other places use their money? And how do they get permission to, to build all of what they have?
Right, okay, and that is something I would um, pass on to administration for that conversation to take place on how these other municipalities are doing or if their groups are doing this, these things. And I'm sure you wouldn't mind connecting maybe after the, the meeting. Um, and I wish we could talk more, but unfortunately we have to move on. There's also, I don't know if you've checked into the grants that um, are available to organizations and whatnot. Please look into those as well to see if there's anything that you're eligible for there, um, that the county's able to assist with that. And thank you again for coming here today and, and giving us this information in your presentation and you do amazing things out there, so thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're just gonna take a couple of minutes, folks, so we can switch things up there for uh, before our next delegate. Good morning. Thank you, such as good afternoon, apologize for the delay and, and thank you for your patience as we um, get to your delegation now. Um, Mr. Hadfield, Jeff Hadfield, I'm assuming? Yes, welcome, thank you for, for being here today. Um, for everyone here in the room, we're at four point three of our agenda, uh, page thirty-six. Um, we are limited of time, of course, and we'll try and, and, and keep to that, but um, please go ahead with your presentation. I didn't, I'm sorry, I did not intricate everybody to introduce themselves or mention the microphone, I'm sorry, I'm pressed for time in my brain. I will slow down.
Okay.
And we will start with introductions, so on my right.
Rob Minns, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake, Gombe Lake area.
How do you do?
Good morning, Natasha Capitan, Manuk, New Pine Creek in Collington.
Morning, thank you for being here, Gary Cromwell of Fore North, Optune and Pudding, Wandering River.
Morning, Camilla Wall, Division Nine.
Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven, Grassland at Moore Perseveda Areas.
Good morning, Brian Hall, uh, I live in Division Four.
Morning, Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three, which is the Chasm Boyle area.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I'm Tracy Holland, uh, Vision Five, which is east of Athabasca. And with us today, we also have Communication. And with us today, we also have Communication Manager, Jordan Schenkelberg, R C A O, Bob Beck. Our Recording Secretary, Leah Bear, and behind you, we have Director Shadi Am, Shadi, Shadi Ambley, pardon me. And our illustrious uh reporter over here, we have um. Cool. Thank you, Cole Brennan. I appreciate it. Thank you again and for your patience and please go ahead.
Well, I just hope there's not a test after because. But yeah, thank you all for seeing me here this morning and uh I got a bit of a rambling here and the rambling is just sort of uh. How it come to be this is very frustrating to me and my family. It's like, how did it come to this and how did we get so deep into a tax burden? That we really are. Stressful. And uh so I'm here to discuss the uh current uh tax arrears. First, I'd like to understand why the taxes are still considered outstanding if the property was declared and abandoned. And a lot of these questions are probably going to seem simple to you people. You probably know it like the back of your hands. We don't and it's. Frustrating and confusing. Uh abandoned and it remains unclear how that impacts the responsibility assessment for these taxes. Additionally, there was no. Additionally, no one has clearly established what our current tax obligations actually are. And I would appreciate clarification on this matter. So I don't know if there's somebody taking notes or not, but. We just got a big bill and and it's, this is the way it is and you're gonna pay it or we're gonna auction up your land. Uh second, I'd like to address the auction process. Uh we were under the impression we'd have an opportunity to raise funds, sell the property before it was re-auctioned. However, we could. Before we could finalize the title transfer, the property was put back up for auction. To further complicate the matter, the title was only officially back in our names on November twenty seventh. Then on December eighth, we were informed that an auction would be scheduled for December thirtieth. However, we hadn't even officially listed the property until December fourteenth, leaving us with very little time to explore any buyers or. Uh you can imagine two weeks before Christmas, how many responses our real estate agents gonna get. Uh adding to the difficulty, county office and lawyers were closed between the Christmas and New Year's. Which made it nearly impossible to finalize unnecessary steps at times. The closure put an extreme strain on our ability to secure funding, complete paperwork and explore alternatives before the auction deadline. Furthermore, the lack of communication and from staff and council regarding their intentions. We have been forced into a reactive state instead of being able to take proactive approach. This has led to unnecessary expenses such as legal fees instead of investing in appraisals and environmental studies. So on that note, um the land was to be auctioned off. And I'm I'm struggling to find how it could be auctioned off before there was an environmental study because I've been to banks. I've been to the real estate agent. Nothing can happen before that financial and that appraisal. So uh I'm just wondering. How it was the intent that that was gonna happen without that being done because it doesn't seem it would be fair. We uh we all, we also uh. Want to address uh an issue regarding a previous offer we made in the show of good faith. At a meeting with the county, we offered a small sum of money as a gesture of goodwill. However, the administrator advised us that. Because the title was not in our name, it would not make financial set sense as we could potentially never recover the money. If the title transfer could not be completed, that was sound advice and I really appreciated it. Um this highlights a major problem. How are we expected to see your client not seen before the properties are officially in our own name? The title situation has made it extremely difficult to resolve outstanding taxes and more forward in a fair and reasonable way. So we go to see somebody to borrow money and it's like. Okay, you need this, this and this done. And then all of a sudden the land's gonna be auctioned. We better get a lawyer. So all our money that we. Get to do uh an appraisal is fifty five hundred dollars to get somebody to come out and do an appraisal from Edmonton. It's uh the last environmental study we had done was seventy five thousand dollars. I I don't know how much this is gonna be, but. We need to save our resources for getting that done so we can get this property sold. Get your end, get our end. We're about recovering for ourselves as well as the county. So we're hurting in here as well as you and I appreciate that. Uh additionally, um I would like clarification on the regarding the rate that the taxes are being set at. So here's how much you owe us and that's all there is to it. Well, for what years was this? How much were we paying in these years? We weren't. We didn't have a clue. We never got a letter. We never got notification. And if the taxes were supposed to be paid by us, somebody should have sent us a letter saying, Dear John, you owe. Uh actually, I would like clarification since demise. So since the demise of those guys, we haven't heard anything. And and so all these notifications that were being sent out is they're saying that, so last summer, we found out they're gonna auction off the land. Who are they communicating with for these taxes? Because it wasn't us. Uh another major concern is uh well, the lack of tax notifications. I emphasize the concerns regarding the claim that we. Yeah, that's a little bit. So. The key unresolved issues are title transfer delays and and inability to finalize necessary steps before taking that. Before actions were taken. So. We were we were just blindsided by this news. Uh environmental studies and appraisals that we cannot complete due to uncertainty. I've talked to everything right down to B lenders and. It's it's very confident we can get the money to pay this, to pay taxes. But first of all, it wasn't in our name. We've resolved that. Now we need the environmental study and the uh. Uh appraisal. No bank, no B lender is gonna touch me without it. I need to get that done and I can't keep wasting money on lawyers. Uh I wish I had deeper pockets. The 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 list, listing of the property we had listed as an issue, we do have that listed now, but it's very like. We gotta get that, we gotta get that environmental study done. Uh tax payments are ambiguous, so we need, we need clarity on what the taxes are gonna be. So you, we need a little bit of time here. So this is where my lawyer come in and this is where he said I should start talking and so all the rest. Please take his rambling and just a little bit of, had to pour my heart out because we're hurting here. So in summary, I'm respectfully asking council to consider either a reduction, payment, deferral. Or taxes owing on the property. Uh I'm sure everybody in this room is uh familiar with section three forty seven. So do I need to? Okay. Uh the the property was abandoned and was no longer being used for commercial property. It is arguable this. Should have reduced the tax assessed value to the basic farm assessed value. Even though the legal period of time of of to appeal, an assessment has passed. Section three forty seven gives the council an overriding power to equally consider to reduce the taxes owing. Why should the council defer the collection of taxes? As stated, time is needed to consider reassessment of the tax payable based. Upon the fact that the property was incorrectly assessed as commercial property or the previous data period. As well transfers uh try tax arrears accumulated over the period during. Which no notice was offered to me as a mortgage lender by the by the county. I sold the property due to the previous owner in August two thousand fourteen and financed the previous owner purchased. The previous owner purchased with a vendor take back mortgage. Between twenty fourteen and twenty four, I never received a notice from the county on whether the taxes were paid or up to date. So. I I'm almost positive if I didn't pay my taxes on my house, my mortgageur would be getting the notice. As a previously, as the previous owner failed to pay the taxes, they accumulated to a level that required me to either sell or refinance. That refi- refinance the property. A refinance or sale of property will take time and require me to obtain an environmental assessment and appraisal for the property. As cons, as a consequence, I'm respectfully asking this council to at least defer collection of taxes. I should mention that it is al- also open to the council to both reduce and defer tax owing. There's a lawyer talking. Uh thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you uh very much for your presentation uh and the information that you have provided to us. Um we will be having a conversation uh coming up in our uh later on in our meeting. So at this point, I will just turn it over to the table to see if anyone has any questions. And Councilor Anderson, please.
Thank you. You mentioned that you feel that the property should have been assessed as farmland rather than commercial. Can you explain what farming operations were happening on the property?
Well, it's just that previous to to these people taking it uh. Suncor leased some land off me on there and when Suncor left, the taxes fell back to a farm rate. So you know what, other than a little bit of hay and and stuff like that, it's it's. It's minimal at the least to say what kind of, maybe if you bit of hay bale and stuff like that. Yeah, it was, it's not like I have a major farm operation on the go or anything else like that. But neither do I have commercial work on the go.
And you also mentioned that you feel that you should have been notified as the mortgage holder. Did you have a registered lien on the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilor Cromwell?
Thank you, Mister Hadfield, for your presentation. Um I was taking a lot of notes. You're very quick in some of your timelines, but. Uh what I got is November twenty seven, twenty four, the property was back in your name. And then December of twenty four, you got notice of auction. Give me one moment here. I'm just going through my. So you're asking for a uh deferring of the collection of taxes and possibly a reduction of the tax for the owing.
Yes, uh uh and. The deferring is let, let's defer, take a look at, I don't know if there's anybody sitting on council when this all first uh came about when they had the camp on that land. But uh there was some negotiation there. The monitor was supposed to be paying a portion of the taxes and there would be some left with us. After that happened, the lawyer for the county asked for more time from my lawyer. I asked my lawyer, what do we do now? He said, wait. Each time I would call him, it would be, well, we we have to wait for their thing. The last time I called him, it was a five hundred and fifty dollar bill to find out, we have to wait. I don't have that deep pockets that I can do that. I sat and waited and and next time I heard it was, it was the land was being auctioned and. I mean, we never, we never even got a bill saying that your taxes this year are a thousand dollars or your taxes this year are fifty thousand dollars. Something would have sparked us had we got a notice like as fast as we could. When we got that first notice. We got down to land titles and got things done. Be before we even got that done, w- w- we got a call from the county saying, this is how far along. You are in the process line with land titles. We couldn't even get that information. And I don't know if there's somebody has a uh ear to the ground in land titles or not, but. They knew that this was going through and yet they still put the land up for auction before we had a chance to say, okay, now we are the landowners. We're going to the bank. The bank says this is what we need. Take these steps. I'm willing to take these steps. I'm very confident I can uh, I can get. Them done. I'm very confident we can sell the property. But it doesn't happen overnight. So.
So to the second part of my question then, uh what type of uh timeline are you looking for?
I'm looking for your grace. I'm looking for you to tell me like I'm looking for. If you say six months. I'll bust my butt. If you say a year, better yet. But I need, I need some time because these things don't just happen overnight. The last environmental uh study person I tried to hire. Uh I don't know where they, whether they just caught wind of it, you know, somebody, something stinky in Denmark. They actually pulled out and said. You know what? We'd like to rescind their offer and and hold back. So you know what? Everything here just seems to be getting so. Complicated. I I don't want to go to any more lenders and spook people. Uh I've 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 already. Gone and looked like I got egg on my face to many, so many people that uh I'm I'm getting antsy here. So I just need a little bit of time. Get my uh ducks in a row. And whether it sells first or whether we refinance first, really don't. Just so long as we both get our end in this. I'm not about saying, I I understand that taxes are attached to the land. We can all hate taxes, but that's the fact. So we get it. Will, and we've said from the beginning, it's not about not paying the tax taxes. Unless you guys want to forgive it and forget it all like like it says you can do, well, please do.
Thank you, Councilor Paul.
Um two, two questions, sir. Uh so is a land current, or three, I guess. Is a land currently listed for sale?
It's with the uh uh one must come, call go banker.
And and so are you, do you have it listed as agricultural land?
No, commercial.
And then the second um question is, have you already entered into a tax payment plan?
We have.
Good, thank you. I I appreciate you coming in. I know it's a difficult time.
I I know that that tax uh uh agreeing plan. The very last line of that thing was, they they say that we owe X and the payments are gonna be twenty thousand dollars a month. And in the last line of that agreement, it says that I'm signing this with undue dress. And we had the option of not signing it and the land would go up for auction. So it's sort of to me like into uh, I have this gun to your head and uh you can sign this contract. Or I've got a five hundred thousand dollar gun that says we're gonna pull the trigger on your deal if you don't. Uh if you think that we didn't sign that under duress, then you're sadly mistaken. Uh we signed it because it was what it took to stay alive. And that's what we're here about today. We want to stay alive. We want our money or recoup our money. We want to do our part for the county.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I don't believe um there's any further questions around the room. Um I know the questions that I had have already been asked. Um so again, I appreciate you coming here today and providing your first presentation. And and uh giving us the information that you have. Uh we will be coming back to it here uh later on in the meeting. It is live streamed and recorded. You're welcome to stay or you're welcome to have a look on YouTube uh as well to see what uh the conversation is at a later time.
I'll I'll put my hands in your good grace. I just look uh, I look for something fair. And something we can both get for and I'll put myself in your good.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming here today. Appreciate it. Take good care. Thank you.
We should probably recess for lunch. If that's all right with folks. I know it's been a very long uh morning. So lunch, if we can do twenty five minutes, if that's satisfactory. So we will come back at twelve forty? Twelve forty words?
Sorry, we're we're back online there. Returning from our lunch break, I'll call this order or this meeting back to order here. And I believe we left off in our discussions at eight point two for the meeting calendars. And refresh my memory where we were at.
We were working around the room and getting last minute additions.
We're discussing that conference, but.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty twenty fifth, twenty sixth of February. It's two day conference at Grand Prairie. With the C W packs and then. Can I keep going on?
Absolutely.
I just got a couple here. February tenth, the regional waste meeting. And February eighteenth, there's a Athabasca watershed council meeting on Zoom. And that's it for me.
Awesome. In light of the um, the Water Coalition Conference that's coming. Do we have an answer back from RMA with regards to if they're able, the ten AM tentative Army member? Do we did we get an answer back from them?
Yes.
Yes, we did get confirmation that the RMA member visit will happen on the twenty fifth at ten AM.
Okay.
Uh, here in council chambers for two hours.
For two hours. Okay. Thank you. Um, is there? I don't know how many people would be wanting to attend the Water Coalition, and I don't know how amendable the Army. Visitation would be. Is that something that council wants to? Counsel Cromwell?
I have spoken via email with Director Wilkinson as well, and we can. Uh, rebook the MPC for that date to the twenty seventh. It'll be a very, very quick meeting. Rebook MPC for nine fifteen to lighten up that day. Uh, I would like to attend that in Grand Prairie myself.
And I'm sorry, rebook what for nine fifteen?
The MPC meeting on the twenty fifth. If RMA was not attending, we could rebook that to Thursday, the twenty seventh at nine fifteen. And have adequate time.
And I believe, and just to say, the Army is working on working other municipalities into their schedule as well. And I'm betting if they've already confirmed the twenty fifth, they've confirmed with other neighboring municipalities. So I think.
I had looked into that prior to getting confirmation earlier in the meeting.
Right.
Okay, and then we took a break from calendar.
Okay, we do have time to to talk about that up and coming, but in the meantime, we'll. Leave it in our minds to figure out what's the best avenue other than to leave it as it sits for now. And then figure out how many people are doing the Water Coalition. Sorry. Okay, if everybody's deciding at this, yeah, we can do that as well.
That's it.
We're gonna do a poll to do water. Yep. Who would like to go? One, two. Okay, so we do have enough people here if you're.
Yeah, the the biggest thing is is is. I'd like to be here for everything, but sometimes. You gotta rely on your counterparts to be able to. Hear you the torch.
There you go.
Right on.
All right, there's nothing else with.
So can we just then confirm MPC moving to the twenty seventh at nine fifteen?
Well, um.
As the chair and vice chair will now be absent.
Sure, let's put that up for, you know, how does everyone feel about that if it's okay with Mrs. Wilkinson? Um, is everybody fine with moving MPC to be nine fifteen prior to the council meeting on the twenty seventh?
Or or we can go nine thirty and just have council meeting following immediately following.
I don't know. Is there a rule about having to have a set time for council meeting? I'm thinking.
Yeah, our council meeting dates are pre-approved at the org meeting every year.
Right.
For these certain days at nine thirty.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So nine fifteen would work.
Nine fifteen.
Is everybody in agreeance? Nine fifteen MPC on the twenty seventh? Yes, yes, yes. All right. And do we have any other amendments to make on the calendar? Pretty quiet. All right. Do we have a motion, Counsel Cromwell, uh, to accept the calendar, the meeting calendars as amended? All those in favor? And any opposed? Eight and O. Thank you, guys. Then we go back now to item seven point. Eight of your agenda on page sixty nine. There we go. And so there is a recommendation on this RFD. Who would like to? I believe, Counsel Cromwell, this is one you asked for to be discussed. Seven point eight. This is the um. Present last presentation we had.
Yeah, I thought we had to discuss it anyway, but yes. Administration. Your recommendation is to receive for amended. Out of that presentation, there were a few questions I am working on for you. If someone else wants to jump in for a quick minute while I get my right bullet open here.
Um, if I may, the recommendation was to receive the delegation for information, but there's also options. And one of them was to receive the delegation for information and to direct administration to gather further information and present it at an upcoming county council meeting. Would that be sufficient? Okay, is there a further discussion? Would you like to make that motion? Counsel Anderson?
What specific information are we asking administration to bring us forward? Just for clarity, because I think. Uh, the presentation included a lot of different points, and I think we need to be really clear. If you're asking count admin to bring information forward, what are you asking for?
Let's just go around, discuss it here for a minute. Uh, first off. I appreciate that they have a. A active payment plan, a question to administration. Is tell me about that plan. Is it working? Is it current? Is it being upheld?
I'd be prepared to bring that back to council for discussion.
Okay, then. And I guess we'll have to put it off to another meeting to. Maybe bring back a a report on some options, information about the tax payment plan. And opinions about deferral of collection of taxes. And there there are things I'm just. I I really want to understand, and maybe that'll take some education on my part here on. We're hearing a lot about the cost of approvals and additional environmental studies and. I I just have questions right now.
Counsel Crom.
Yeah, I just noted that as well, that he needed some time to get that environmental study as well in place.
Thank you, Counsel Hall.
Is just, I'm, I think I got lost in the conversation. Is there a motion on the floor then? Like I've just.
We didn't confirm if there was a motion on the floor, but I had asked about if an option was suitable. To receive the delegation for information and to direct administration to gather further information and presented in an upcoming council meeting. So um, so we basically are having that discussion.
I'm just kind of wondering, we had a very, as most people here will remember, thorough. Presentation and discussion on this item enclosed. And I'm, you know, the the property owner has entered into a tax payment plan. I'm not sure what else we want out of this. It's currently listed publicly through. Uh, as I said, we were told to Coldwell Banker. At an asking price of three point two million. And. I just, we, administration has already presented this information. Council has already made a decision. And I don't see a lot of value in. Continuing to belabor a decided decision. I think we should accept it for information, move on.
Well, I appreciate that, but the whole point of being at this table and in this room is to discuss and go over things and sometimes more than one time. And you could feel the frustration. In his voice, you could see it on his face and. If if all we're talking about is granting time to somebody for somebody to come up with. Uh, paying paying their back taxes, not getting a little bit of money on their own on it. I don't see the harm in granting time. We're going to get paid our taxes whether we sell their property today. Or they sell their property tomorrow. It's different as taxpayer money. We can't. I can't in good conscience, and I know around this room, we've talked about it before, say, okay, we're going to reduce your taxes by. Two hundred thousand fifty dollars, whatever it be. Uh, but I think we can. Realize that there are. Our people, and if they are, that's why I was asking administration, if they are doing their due diligence, doing their best. And. And we. Be human. Can we play a little bit of ball here? And I really think we can.
Counsel Anderson?
As Mr. Hadfield stated in public and on a recording that he signed the agreement under duress. I'd also question the legality of that document and whether the payment plan is valid. Or the property should have been auctioned off and the payment plan is not valid.
Okay. So as we have these have this conversation here now today, what is the motion that council would like?
I would be prepared to. Make the motion to. Offer a twelve month deferral on collecting taxes, but. Again, there's information from administration that we need, so I will make a motion to bring this back to the next council meeting with the. Information as we discussed from administration.
So can we can we clarify what information we're looking for, though? Like, I don't understand what information we need. Um, the. From what I've heard, there's no net new information from the last discussion we had, so I just want to understand what we're asking administration to do before I vote on this.
If I may, I I believe that the one of the questions was, is it possible to defer the collection? Is it? Is there a possibility for a reduction? Those two items, of course, would be administrative advice that we would need as far as I can tell.
And it was the payment plan. What is the status of that? Uh, is that working? Bits of information that we need, but. Are are very important to make an informed decision and. Yes, having a discussion a while back in closed, I do not keep all my closed notes. So we are asked administration to provide information.
Okay, Counsel Mins?
Yeah. Up until the point where I finally figured out what we were discussing here as he was talking and and that, but. Okay, so bring me the brass notes here is is he signed a payment plan and he didn't adhere to the payment plan? So that's why we're selling it? No, I'm so totally lost with this.
Benham Chair, I think we'll bring back a report. For you. Um, we're happy to do that because we're keeping excellent notes. We're very lucky that the same staff member has handled this file from start to today. Um, and has excellent notes already.
Perfect.
And I feel uncomfortable discussing someone else's tax situation in an open session. It's not fair to people.
Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. Thank you for that.
So I believe I have a motion on the floor to bring this back. Uh, as we have discussed in in a closed session.
So if I if I may read it, um, to receive the delegation for information and to direct administration together. Further information in and present their report at an upcoming county council meeting in closed session. Is that fair? All right. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Six, seven and opposed to seven and two. That motion carries. Thank you.
Six and two.
Six and two. Lord, thank you. I didn't eat enough lunch, I don't think. There may be eight too much. Um, I guess we are finished with our open items. We have nothing in reports. Oh, I'm I'm sorry. I didn't have seven, seven listed as I believe it was in here to receive the delegation for information.
Sorry, I had it highlighted. I thought you'd said it when we were talking.
I apologize. Did everybody? Did I miss it? Okay, all right. So if we can go take a motion to go into close, Counsel. All those in favor? Any opposed? No, we're good to go. We are now in. All right, everybody, we're back. We're we've just. We've just come out of closed and we have some motion. We've come out of closed and we've had some motions to make. We are live streaming at this point, um, and it will start with twelve point one, Counsel Hall.
I would move that. Athabasca County Council Direct Administration to defer execution. Of the Community Transportation Agreement with the Town of Athabasca and Village Boyle until a review of all funding agreements has been completed.
Thank you. With no discussion, I guess we're out of closes. All those in favor? Thank you. No opposed. I believe we have seven of us now, three, four, five, six, seven and O. Thank you. Alrighty, twelve point two. Counsel Mins has a motion.
That Athabasca County can confirm that meets the requirements of Canada Rural Transportation.
That Athabasca County can confirm that meets the requirements of Canada Rural Transit Solutions Funding Agreement and that the county. CAO be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of Athabasca.
Thank you. There's no discussion, all those in favor? No opposed, seven and O, thank you. Uh, twelve point four, Counsel Hall. Has a motion.
That council authorizes the execution of the agreement. With the Summer Village of Sunset Beach regarding the funding for the Island Lake Waterline Project.
Thank you. With any discussion, all those in favor? And no opposed, thank you, seven and O. Twelve point five, uh, Counsel Mins would like to make a motion through Leah reading it, please.
Moved by Counselor Mins to direct administration to defer the execution of the Regional Healthcare Attraction and Recruitment Committee Agreement. With the Town of Athabasca, the Village of Boyle, and the MD of Opportunity until a review of all funding and funding agreements has been completed.
Thank you. All those in favor? No opposed, seven and O. Don't get me started. Uh, number twelve point six, Counsel Anderson has a motion.
Move that council support the Town of Athabasca for a grant application to the Province of Alberta Community Partnership. Program to facilitate a review of funding and user issues for the Athabasca Regional Multiplex as discussed.
Thank you, all those, oh, go ahead.
I've changed my mind about discussion. I don't need any.
Thank you. All those in favor? No opposed, seven and O. Uh, twelve point seven, Counsel Wallack has a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that council authorize the execution of the inter municipal committee agreement with the Town of Athabasca. And appoint Reeve Hollands, Deputy Reeve Mins, and Counsel Hall uh to the community. As outlined in the agreement.
Thank you. All those in favor? No opposed, seven and O. And twelve point eight, Counsel Chamsick. Oh, pardon me. Counsel Anderson. Yeah, I have twelve point.
Move the council accept, accept the twenty twenty three management letter for information.
Thank you, all those in favor? Seven and O, no opposed, and we have one last motion uh that Counsel Chamsick would like to make.
A motion for CEO back to brief Counsel Gerlock on the enclosed topics.
Thank you, all those in favor? And no opposed, seven and O. And I think that is the end of our day and our business at two thirty one, we will adjourn the meeting.